Good morning, everybody. Thank you for coming out.
Good morning.
I'd like to call the February 1st committee meeting to order. And of course, is the FY21 school budget.
Thanks very much, everybody, for coming out this morning. Before we get started, just want to take it on to thank all of our principals, our central office team, all of our department chairs, technical coordinators, for all the effort they've been putting into developing a budget. We start this process about two months ago with a zero-based budget system that is asked for whatever it is you need. It not necessarily will remove what you had from one year to the other. Appreciate the thoughtful conversations with staff, thoughtful conversations amongst the team to identify what the needs are for our school district. What I've got for you today is just shy of forty pages of our document that outlines all of the costs, potential costs for our school district to provide services for our students and to maintain the high-quality education they receive every year, as well as all revenues that come in this year that we projected. Balance that all out and you'll see the summary of the budget. The document's over on our website. This copy is for folks who come on in. If you want to direct them, they're just behind Kate and Greg on that little table there. There should be two dozen copies or so, important copy as well. And what I propose for a model for the committee is we'll do a little section. And if you want to ask me questions about the section, back and forth, section by section, because if you wade through the end, you may forget that question that you had. Your opening page simply just outlines where we are this year. Do you have three things I want to talk about with that letter? First is describe what a budget structure is. One thing that's important to keep in the back of your mind is that this is a designed to be level services plus recommendations provided. Level services is different than level funding. Level funding is the same amount of money. Level services usually needs an increase in the amount of money because you've got multiple increases, contractual increases, for annual cost of living and those sorts of things. So it's intended not to be a level funding, a level service budget, and also takes into account one future, one month, maybe approximately $1,000 in potential new programming and staff, which we'll talk about. The last paragraph I want to bring your attention to as well. I just want to acknowledge this has been a challenging, tumultuous budget season for sure. We saw some significant unanticipated increases in costs. And we also saw significant unanticipated revenues, both in local and state aid, which may develop in this particular budget, especially challenging. So again, special thanks to this team for working oftentimes late in the nights on updating the budgets, especially when the budget numbers came out from the governor, making sure we've got the best budget for our school district. Just talk a little bit more about those things in particular and drill down into what some of those costs are as well, where the funding will really lies for local and state aid. So again, the budget itself is broken up into a few different parts. First, we'll talk through the budget development. Obviously, our budget is driven by budget priorities of our school district.
Can you speak up? Back here.
There's a microphone here. I'll turn it up for you.
Testing now. Hello, ma'am? Give me a thumbs up in the back, in the back as well? All right, we're there. So again, it's broken up into some parts here. The first is just giving you an outline of the budget development process. The second is our educational priorities, because our budget should be driven by the educational priorities of our school. The operating budget are all the costs. And then we change gears and talk about the funding and resources. And finally, after all of that, we'll talk a little about beyond level services. That is, the projected and recommended additions to a level services budget. And you can see the full summary from there. Our budget development, again, to talk a little bit about this at the outset, is a zero-based budget system, which is we start from scratch each year, ask our teams what it is that we need, and develop the budget accordingly. You can see we're about halfway through the budget season right now with the annual town meeting usually being the end of our budget season where we vote the local appropriations for budget. Part two is our educational priorities. While I won't go through these in too much detail, because I know we've talked about them quite a lot, I just want to underscore that anything that we spend money on should be connected to one of our priorities, right? Be it curriculum or rigorous pedagogy for all students, idea of developing resilient, balanced students, thinking about how we invest in flexible learning environments and/or the local and global community engagement partnership. So we try to connect any spending that we have in our school district to connect to one or hopefully more of these priorities. The first and most important educational priority is just our students. So you have here is a summary of enrollments. We went over this with the committee in January, whatever it was, sixth or seventh meeting. Again, you can see some historical data as well as projections out through till about 2023, 2024. That line in green that you see is the projected enrollment for next year. Got a history here, the district has seen for about a dozen or so years an overall decline in enrollment across the district. That's been shadowed by an overall decline in enrollment in Commonwealth as well as in New England. What's interesting, though, for Situate is this. So when you break that down for elementary versus secondary, since about 2014, 15 till today, we're seeing a gradual increase in elementary enrollment. And that's something that Habib before had alluded to as well, a modest but gradual increase overall in elementary enrollment up through till when you get to 2023, 2024. Again, if you look back from page six and page seven, we even take a look at the birth data in town as well. And you see the birth data for our kindergartners in 2023, 2024 is actually low. So that's why you see that potential dip. Now, that may be a blip on the radar, but that may be a new trend as well. And it's something that the community and the district will have to keep a look at. In secondary enrollment, you see the inverse trend. Our secondary numbers, both in middle school and high school, are continuously declining. And interestingly enough, at that 23, 24 mark, FY23, 24 mark, you start to see that increase. That's reflected simply in the fact that you've had an increase in elementary school students for that many years. They'll eventually arrive in your middle school, and your middle school students enter high school. The only other item I'd share with you on enrollment that is apropos is kindergarten. So we're actually in the process of doing kindergarten enrollment. You can see that little note here below on page seven. It's underway. We probably have eighty-five percent of our data in, ninety percent of our data depends each year. Sometimes you get a spike in the spring. But you can see our kindergarten estimates right there are about 210. What's particularly interesting is that our half-day kindergarten numbers have been significantly low. Right now, we have four total students who are enrolled in a half-day K. So the model that we have developed here in the budget would be to no longer use our one section, one classroom model for half-day K. It's having them have a dedicated classroom. And we propose we have a model where our students in half-day K will go to their home schools and be embedded directly in full-day class for half of the day, obviously. It maximizes our staffing and minimizes transitions for students ultimately. Typically, we have our half-day K, students go to half-day K. We then go to one building and one classroom, and then revert back in first grade to their home school, right? The school that their street would be considered for enrollment. So those trends could change, and that could change the model that we have. But at this moment, with only four kiddos, that would be the model that we'd roll into FY21 with kindergarten. Everything else remains relatively the same in terms of impact on enrollment.
So I have a lot of questions about what we can have in K into the life of them. So if we're rolling, no, actually, kids?
No.
No. So if we're rolling the half-day kindergarten kids, which we said is, right now, we have four, and I know that the numbers can change, but it's going to affect our staffing and thus our budget. And I have questions about how that will look for children who are enrolled. Like, this is a big, big thing. So if you're in a half-day kindergarten program now, you go until, what, maybe like 11:30, 11:00, or 12:00? So how will their academics and things look? How are they going to be in specials? How does that affect budgeting, the day schedule, all of it, for kids?
I'll start with budgeting, and I'll tell you a little about just a day in general. And then I'll pass it on to if our elementary team wants to share some more detail with you. So it doesn't directly impact our budgeting in that we have a half-day K teacher and a half-day K parent professional. And as you can see later on in the budget, we also have retirements as well. So it wouldn't imply a reduction in staffing in any way. It'd simply imply a transfer of staffing ultimately. And that's captured in the retirements that we already have. But it wouldn't mean that we have to have a dedicated classroom and dedicated staff just to half-day K. Again, if those numbers change, we may have to, right? If those numbers spike back up, it's entirely possible we have to. But it wouldn't be a reduction in force in any stretch of the imagination. That's actually one of the things that we're really proud of about this budget. You know, there's been some challenges with overall costs. This budget reflects no reductions in force at all, other than the natural turnover that you'd get through retirements, youth abstinence, and those sorts of things. In terms of the program itself, half-day K is half of the day. So I want to be transparent with the committee and the community. You're not going to get the same program that you get in full-day K as you do in half-day K. It's only half of that day. That said, the team has been working on figuring out what schedules would be for students in half-day K to ensure that they try to get equity in their day, to get their specials and their playground time and recess and those sorts of things. But I think sometimes there's a misnomer about what half-day K is, that it's just full-day condensed. It truly is just half of that day. So there will be things that you don't get in half-day K that you would get in full-day because you have the full day. But in terms of the schedule, that'd be embedded within typically one section. Because if you take a look at our four kiddos, they're currently distributed two in one building, one another, one another. So it'll only be one section of kindergarten in a building that will play host to, a student could be there for approximately half a day. Is there a question while we're talking?
Yes, I just, I think it's really complicated with an elementary schedule when you have, say, I mean, I don't know for my own children, so Cushing in from work. I mean, I work with this because it has five or six sections in K. So, I mean, it's like they do all their literacy in the morning, and it's best for children to learn, you know, their, yes, exactly. And then they usually have their specials later on in the day just because of attention spans and, you know, their whole cognitive development. So I'm just, I don't, I think it's complicated. And I don't know what the, I mean, obviously, I think we all know what the best answer is, that we could potentially provide full-day K for all of our students. But I know that this is like a wiggly subject, but I'm just, I'm concerned about the day schedule for those that are paying for full-day K, that they're not getting a subpar schedule to accommodate the half-day schedule. And I'm obviously concerned that the half-day kids are getting what they need as well. I know that there's four kids, I saw that classroom where we did our walk-throughs in August, and it's definitely not the best allocation of our resources to have a professional teacher and then a family aide in there as well, four, five, six kids. So I know that this is like a tug-of-war kind of conversation, but I just think we need to really figure it out.
I agree. Are you concerned about half-day K in general? That half-day K is maybe less of a program than a full-day K? Or are you concerned more about half-day K embedded, or both?
Both.
So I can't answer anymore about, just there is differences between a half-day K and a full-day K. That's the reality of it.
Yeah.
That's a family choice, right? So just to give you an example for my family, I sent my son to full-day K. We'll be sending my daughter to half-day K. Every kid's really different, and some kids are ready to go for that full-day, and some kids maybe just aren't at that moment. And so I think that's a family choice that we want to be able to offer in families still. Again, knowing that the programs are really different.
I think it can affect enrollment too, because based on what you just said too. I mean, I'm thinking if I had the option to send my oldest baby to half-day K at a homeschool for free, and he's a July birthday, I may have done that. But it can be a negative if you have to send your Cushing homeschool child to, you know, Hattaway for half-day. So that's full people into half-day that may, I'm just thinking it's a huge deal. I don't know what the answers are, but, and also our half-day K teacher, if they're the same sort of professional teaching requirements, they teach a full-day program, whether they're a part-time job turned full-time job.
Say more about your question there.
We have a retirement.
Yes.
And that half-day person will now pick up a full-day job, the same sort of...
There's an option to do that. Can't force that on somebody, obviously. But I want to emphasize, it's not a reduction in force at all. There'd be options for, in this case, a half-day K position to move to other positions. And not necessarily even kindergarten positions, but other positions that there's a license to for.
I can speak to the half-day kindergarten.
Let me project and help you.
Half-day currently housed at Hattaway. Half-day is currently housed at Hattaway. And the way that the specialist is set up, they're in the same specialist block anyhow. Half-day K goes to their specialist, the same time full-day K goes to their specialists. So that won't impact. And as far as the curriculum goes, there's typically a math portion and an ELA portion in the morning for all the kindergartens anyhow, because they're fresh and you want to hit that hard. And then in the afternoon, they're more like center-based, and there's more interventions and acceleration block. So those pieces is what they've missed. But at least, I can always speak to Hattaway, kindergarten, full-day, and half-day. It wouldn't impact like the specialist and all of that. It would be okay if we fit them in the morning.
And I did notice that, I mean, I just think it's good that, I think we need to have a conversation. I think that the community should know that this is something that we're working on. I know that we're not the only district that's doing this, since I was looking at other districts budgeting processes. I saw that they were kind of heading in that direction too, and kind of trying to embed that. I don't, I mean, I'm not saying it's not a good idea. I just want to make sure that parents know we're still open at all.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're, we're working on trying to figure out, because right now, we only have one half-day program, so it is at Hattaway. The other three elementary schools, there are going to be challenges with scheduling, and we're still working on that, so.
It's spicy. The standards are addressed in either half-day or full-day K. One of the things to consider in terms of half-day K is a major part of kindergarten is learning, having part of a school and being part of a group. When you have a critical mass of ten or less, and kids are absent, and all this happens, they are really more almost like a family, which, you know, at home learning. And that's fine, I guess, but they don't have peer experiences. They don't, they're missing a piece of indoctrination in the school, which is really a major point of socialization, emotional development, and also navigating schools and having, developing a positive attitude towards schools. So there are issues on both sides of the equation.
You have a couple of questions. Because the current enrollment of the four is three schools spread out around three elementary schools.
I'm sorry, say that again.
The current half-day K enrollment will be spread out over three elementary schools.
Yeah, but again, that's early numbers, right? And so to Nicole's point, those numbers could certainly change with all the factors we just talked about. But right now, there's four kiddos that, where they live, their family's street addresses, they would be at three elementary buildings.
And as you mentioned, if there's a need to develop half-day K curriculum or learning program is the same as full-day. If we do build this model, can we just be sure that, in my understanding, we have the ability to charge full-day K tuition because we offer half-day K program? In my eye, in my mind, I want to be sure that if we do this model, that that still qualifies? That we're sending half-day K kids to a full-day program by pulling them out? I want to make sure that still qualifies, so that we can still rightfully charge full-day tuition? Just want to be sure of that.
So the sure answer is yes. There's no stipulation that it requires to be a separate classroom necessarily. And that's why Miss Brinley, first, Brinley alluded to other districts doing the exact same thing. I guess the last thing I'd just say is, you know, I think long-term, the ideal that our school district offered full-day K for free. We'll talk more about, you know, offsets and fees. And I appreciate that you got to charge fees for certain things. And our kindergarten program is certainly expensive, and the fees offset that, and that's all true. And it would be nice to not have to charge any fees of any kind. But if you pick one program that you'd want to eliminate fees for, it'd be a kindergarten program, without question. Because I think, in my opinion, full-day kindergarten gives students more education, gives them more opportunities. Again, that said, as a parent, I'm choosing half-day K for one kiddo and full-day for another, so I can still appreciate the value of choice. But the idea that, you know, fee versus no fee program for public education in 2020 and beyond, kindergarten should be part of the educational program. Maybe thirty years ago, forty years ago, I can see that being different. But I think there's so much value in giving kids kindergarten that all school districts in the Commonwealth should be in that place. I know Situate's working to get to that place, but I'd be hopeful that we can get there sooner or earlier.
Did half-day, excuse me, do parents who've enrolled already for half-day K, are they aware that this is potentially what will happen?
No, this is the first, we've talked about it here. And again, there's no formal memo that's gone out that's set that in stone. But now that we've got the rough data in here, I want to emphasize that kindergarten enrollment's still ongoing. Move-ins coming and out, we're still at like eighty-five, ninety percent number. We haven't pulled the trigger on either of those models yet, because we don't have all of our kindergartners identified yet.
So if, if it's determined we have an additional enrollment, we can't house these kids, do we have budget ability in our budget to add back that half-day classroom?
We do, and you'll see that at the end of the budget. Or if those numbers change dramatically, either way. Other questions, enrollment? Part three is the operating budget. So this is your summary of costs ultimately. In that upper right-hand corner, you can see sort of actuals for eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. You see the budget that was at Special Town Meeting. Just a point and note there, and you'll see that in the actual text. But that's a reconciled budget from Special Town Meeting. If you recall from last year, we received additional funding as part of the supplemental budget that came through Chapter 70 that the state passed in the late spring, which was then realized for us at Special Town Meeting, you'll remember what it was. So that's your reconciled budget for FY20. And then 21 is just your budget request for 21. The rows themselves, personnel services, are just that. Those are salaries for teachers and parent professionals, custodians, and school leaders, and bus drivers, you name it. They're in there, and you can see them broken out, and we'll show you each building, each program. That second row there is recommended beyond level services. Those are the recommendations that are not embedded directly in your budget, purposely called out because it's not part of a final operating budget, but it's something for us to consider going forward. So it's intentionally called out for you. Contractual services are services that are typically rate expenses. They include everything from educational services for students to professional development, to large program adoptions where an organization comes in and starts providing those services for us. Materials and supplies, just that, materials and supplies. And your staff retirement at about $250,000. In parentheses, that would be accounting, nomenclature, if you will, that identifies as a savings in the ultimate cost, right? And that's an estimate to date. Obviously, those numbers can change. And we're in February, so we expect that there may be some changes there. Point to note about staff retirements, it also includes things like current projections for leaves of absence. So this year, we had a number of staff members who were substantially sick, some serious cases. And for those of you that were with a sick bag, maybe this year you walked through some of those cases along with us. We have some of those projected already going into next year, as well as things like savings for job shares and those sorts of things. Again, not all those are in yet, but that grouping, that row represents where we stand to this point for essentially staff turnover and potential savings. In some cases, that staff turnover is a increase in costs versus a decrease in costs. But for the most part, the fly, namely, for staff retirements, generally speaking, the large majority of those staff retirements, generally speaking, someone's retiring, they're retiring at the higher end of a salary rate. And we generally place, based on the economics of the region, so not in certain, the lowest end of the salary rate, but usually lower than the very top. That's the quick breakdown of the overall costs for FY21. And this is just a drill-down page for you. You can see our pie graph of distribution of costs for our school district. In blue is personnel services, just over eighty percent of our overall budget personnel. About four percent or so is stuff, materials, equipment, and about fifty in contractual services. As we talked about in the January meeting, the costs for contractual services have been up. So the overall proportion there of that like pie, piece of the pie, has increased. I want to be transparent about that. Lastly, just a couple of quick notes you see in the bottom there. So a large majority of our costs ultimately are staffing. We have about thirty-five and some change, a million dollars in budget committed to staff. About 1.4 or so is budget for operations, IT, district staffing. And the whole remainder is in all of our six schools, which is what you'll see on the next set of current pages to break out by school, by program, how we use these resources for our school district. So what I'd do, if you don't mind, I'd like to go through each of the schools for you and then open it up to your questions that you may have for us. And we've got all our principals here as well, who can also answer questions specific to individual schools. So part three is the budget breakdown, runs by school. You see in front of you the Cushing Elementary School. Breaks down personnel services, so for example, you said it's in the paragraph, we expect eighteen sections over in the Cushing, there's some change projected from October this year. These costs do reflect the conversation we just had, a potential integration of half-day kindergarten into full-day sections throughout the district, right? Contractual services are just that, so there are memberships of school licensed software for things like Aspen, which is our SIS, A-S-O-P, which is like a staffing software for sick days and personal days and those sorts of things. Baseline is the software we use for evaluations, we get uploaded to there. And then facility management systems, where we take a look at how we set up all of our rooms, and people can request, you know, to use the gym and those sorts of things. Materials and supplies are broken out as well. Textbooks are usually, textbooks and text are usually separated from things like instructional supplies, general supplies, and there's a body that's still available. So there's your snapshot for Cushing Elementary School. I'll share with you a lot of the same for Hattaway. It's important to know maybe two important differences with Hattaway, Cushing. You'll see that in a couple of the other elementary schools as well, that house different programs. So Hattaway houses our ILC and our PLC programs. Those are potentially separate programs for students with significant disabilities. So regardless of where a student lives or a family lives in our school district, if their disabilities qualify them for this program, they attend the Hattaway Elementary School. That said, that means that our personnel services reflect it accordingly, right? So the state requires us to account for personnel wherever it is they work and live, right? And so even though, for example, you may have district staff who are ultimately providing services at the ILC or the PLC, the kiddos from around our community, their costs for salary and materials and those sorts of things have to be reflected in the building in which they work. So you can see that difference with the Hattaway. The other important note, because we talked about this a few months ago, the school committee as well, is that we're projecting thirteen sections for Hattaway this year. Again, last year, Hattaway hosted that half-day kindergarten classroom that we talked about integrating. And in addition, last year, there were three sections of the fourth grade, and this year is going to only require necessarily two sections of the fourth grade. And that's because we've got a population of students graduating out, a larger population of students graduating out. Still have those three sections in the fifth grade. But again, the following year, that'll probably go down to two as well. If I could maybe just give a quick summary of the buildings, and that way we can pass it around to all the principals and ask them.
I'd love Cushing questions.
We can go back if you prefer, however you like to do it. You got it.
So, okay, so it's tough. I know you cringe when I, you can't hear me, no. Okay, I know you cringe sometimes when I like to compare us to other towns and things, say that so-and-so does this and that and the other thing. But like, in order for me to understand this budget, I had to have, I had to do additional research and go out and look at what other towns do to have some comparables. And quite honestly, Duxbury, weirdly, I don't know why we don't see account numbers to these funds in the breakdown of personnel, the cost, what people, you know, where is everything? Like, so what if admin- Like, so what is admin operations? I mean, that's like a massive number. I don't understand how that breaks down at all. There's just not enough. That's kind of what people are looking for when they're talking about transparency in the budget. We don't see where, like, I see a difference here, instructional supplies at Cushing from FY '19 to FY '20. It's a $30,226 difference. I'm assuming that has to do with instructional materials such as like Eureka Maps. I don't know. I just, I don't think, it doesn't, it's a broad view, and I just don't know why we're not seeing like percent change over the year, what the difference in actually what we've spent is. It's like, it's a lot of ambiguity, I guess. So where are the numbers, where is the rest of the numbers? So what is the difference, so my question is, $30,226 in difference spending from FY ' '19 to FY '20, in general, in instructional supplies at Cushing, did it come?
It's not from FY '19 to FY '20, or from FY '20 to FY '21?
Sorry, '20 to '21. Or whatever this, yeah, '19 to '20, and then back down. It's a huge number. I just don't know what the difference would be.
So I can't give you off the top of my head from '19 to '20. We can look that up for you and get it back to you, right? So I don't, we're prepared to present FY '21 for the committee today, not FY '20 necessarily, but that doesn't mean we can't go get all of that information for you. We can pull up every single book that was purchased and all the pencils that were purchased, and you can get all of that, you're welcome to it. But I don't have that for FY '19 to FY '20.
I have a question kind of along those lines. I was wondering if you could comment on the line that's throughout this budget proposal of the budget as of October 1st. I know we received some additional funds in October as a result of special town meeting, but I'm trying to compare those numbers to the original budget request of fiscal year '20. And I don't know why we're not seeing the original budget compared to the budget as of October 1st. I don't know what that October 1st number really represents, because we voted a budget as of April of last year, not as of October 1st.
So as I mentioned, there's a reconciled budget that comes in though, right? When you get a supplemental budget from the state of Massachusetts, you have to use that money and appropriate it accordingly. And so where additional money comes in, you have to appropriate that money. So this budget here for FY '20 can and does look different whenever new money comes in. Otherwise, when new money comes in, you haven't spent it on something. So the intention of that line is to show you, this is where we'd spend that money when it came in. And again, just to remind you, in the spring, we received an additional appropriation through Chapter 70 that was part of the supplemental state budget. So you see that on the revenue side of things, but you also have to see it on the cost side of things. So that number does and should look different than what you voted back in April, because you didn't have that money back in April.
Right, which I could agree with, but some of these numbers are, the numbers are being adjusted, but some of them are going down. So for example, just on Cushing, because we're on it, the teacher's special service thing's worth $3,099.30. The number here as of October is 2920655, so it's less. So when we get additional funding, I would assume that numbers would go up.
Yes, but again, when you actually do the hiring, you make an estimate as to where you're going to hire, and that hire may or may not be that estimate. Your numbers do fluctuate every year. I want to be, again, transparent with this committee, the numbers that you vote in April are estimated numbers for your staffing. You don't have all of your hiring done by then, because July 1 is the start of your budget year, right? So you can't set those hires in place for your budget until July 1, that money's actually in. So in April, for example, and again, we can take a look at this paper where you'd like, if you've got three additional staff, say in a particular line, you've made an estimate as to where their step-in lane is going to be based on the demand that's out there. Some positions require higher demand and therefore higher costs, others less so. But the actual person who is hired may or may not hit that dollar amount on the nose, and so that may go up and down. That's part of every single budget, not just constituent, in your Duxbury, in wherever comp budget you're looking for, there's going to be movement and change. So if you're looking for an exact number from April to now, that never happens in any budget, there's always going to be that fluctuation, because you're making an estimate in April that's going to be realized in the fall. And again, just to emphasize, in our particular case, an additional supplemental revenue and distribution of that supplemental cost in your budget.
I don't necessarily agree. I would, for me, it's very helpful to see, I appreciate the October 1st numbers, because those are more realistic numbers for all who are experiencing, I understand that. But in the budget process, for me, it's helpful to know what did we approve last year based upon the proposals versus what are our anticipated expense, true anticipated expenses, which I think is very helpful. I'm just having a hard time understanding that. I think we'll see that in future numbers as well, and we'll discuss those.
I just want to draw your attention to the FY '19 actuals. So if you're looking for trend, you see FY '18 actuals, FY '19 actuals, and you see your most up to date budget for '20, the fiscally that we're currently in, followed by the projected budget for '21. So it does give you four years of trend data there, giving our projection.
I'd like to just add to what Nicole was talking about, the transparency. And just looking at the instructional supplies for Cushing, and how FY '19 is 21 and change, and it goes up to 51 and change, and then back down to 35 and change, and just kind of, just information as to, you know, what was purchased, you know, why the fluctuation in that amount? And they, you give a brief synopsis for each school, and in materials and supplies, there's really nothing to explain what that fluctuation was. Was it new programming? Was it, you know, new curriculum? Just something like that.
And so again, it's the purpose of today is to have some of that conversation as well, as well as why about your team here. And so what I hope to do is go through the buildings and then certainly have each building leader give you some examples of where that money is added, the kinds of things that represent a change from FY '20's current operating budget to what the projection will be for FY '21. I want to be clear, there's not an itemization for you about every pencil that's purchased, but if you'd like to know the new programming and new books and new materials that I think is apropos in a $43 million budget, then the team is prepared to be able to share that information with you today. If you're looking for a specific accounting of the number of, you know, moves of paper or whatever it might be, we'll certainly have to get that to the committee, but that's not something that we have prepared for this level of summary. Tell me, would you like me to go on? You want to talk more about the building?
I just, going through it all too, I'm curious what it could look like. I guess if you have any questions again, if you want to say anything. When we compare our elementaries, and I know we have some really amazing and unique and necessary opportunities for our students, and of course, ILC, PLC, ECC, is there a way to see, I guess this is the question, is there a way to see it separated from, you could see the elementaries and then specialized programming separately, or is it just the way that it's, why do we have them combined? Like, it's impossible to compare Hadley and Cushing, which are, you know, identical in terms of enrollment, but then Hadley includes ILC and PLC, it's hard to see kind of the resources allocated between the two, and we're also including ILC, PLC, and then of course, Wampanoag County, ECC, it's still, I don't know, it's hard to compare. And the GEMS, at Jenkins, like, they're all on separate, for me, my brain just can't function that way. I just can't see it separate. I'd like to see it separated. We know we're spending all our specialized programming.
So you'd like to see the cost of staffing and materials for the specialized program?
As well as quality of the schools.
We'll happen to do that for you, it's just never been requested, and we can give you that breakout.
So for Hadley.
Mine?
I'm using it.
We talk a lot of those.
That works. For Hadley, we, you, this is going to be one last fourth-grade teacher, which looks like it makes sense based on the class size. Would that fourth-grade teacher go to another grade, like second, where the class size is larger?
That's correct. And it may or may not be in a building, that's something that we continue to work on through the spring. I want to underscore that, even though there's a reduction in overall sections, it's not a reduction in force, is the numbers of potential retirements that we have.
No, I guess my question is, would that person, so we don't know whether that person could go to that.
Correct. And that person has some options as well, it's a voice and choice in that process.
I know, being a Hadley parent, there's been a lot of people saying, well, if that second grade is going to be really large next year, they will, you can see if there will be a second, or a third section next year anyways? So it's, I'm asking a very pointed question.
Got it. So there, so your second, there's no additional second-grade section in this budget for the Hadley.
Okay.
So the, again, just to answer with a really pointed answer, that is, the numbers of students that we currently have in our first grade, assuming there's no move-ins and move-outs, would continue to be the same number and the same teacher-to-student ratios in second grade.
Well, I guess on that topic, I think last year, we had a slight miscue in the calculation of kids moving from kindergarten to first, and we're confident that we counted all the numbers this year. We have all the half-day kids counted, we should have moved them to the first grade.
We always do those counts. We can't guarantee, again, that families don't move in, move out, whatever it might be, that always does change.
But our existing K enrollment is fully accounted for.
No, as I emphasized at the beginning, we're still in the process of doing enrollment.
This year's enrollment in kindergarten going to first grade, we have those numbers secured, so the projection for first grade, with the exception of move-ins and move-outs is accurate. I believe that that's where we stumbled last year and didn't quite have the movements, anticipated classrooms. I think we missed counting our half-day K games last year in our projection of our first grader, that's quite the point. We have the half-day K's counted this year.
Yes, I don't believe that was the case for last year. Are you sure?
I think so.
So next, you see your Wampanoag Elementary School. Again, to Miss Crane's point, it does include your early childhood center as well in there, ECC. Happened to give you a breakout into the other programs as well. It also reflects 19 sections, that's K through five. Obviously, your ECC program is included in your staffing, in your specialists, paraprofessionals, and so on in there too. Jenkins Elementary School, similar. That one houses all of our district students' GEMS program, and it's also a district-wide program where students with significant social, emotional disabilities would attend. Still expecting 18 sections over at the Jenkins as well. That includes the integration of that half-day program. But your staffing does reflect the staffing for GEMS programs, teachers, as well as specialized Gates Middle School, a little bit different in terms of the number of sections there, so they run two teams with four classes per team. Their total, 24 class sections there ultimately. Important to know is that second paragraph, though, it's substantially different and not included in those numbers, is a proposal to take the existing GEMS program that we have at the Jenkins Elementary School and expand it over to the Gates Middle School as well. You can see more about that on page 27, it's in the beyond level services. But those numbers are not currently reflected in FY '21 on that sheet for the Gates program, but it's been pulled out separately as part of our executive summary to have a conversation about whether or not it's appropriate to do that allocation of about $110,000 for teacher and paraprofessional. What it would allow us to do, we can take students who are currently in our GEMS program and continue to provide them services in the middle school. That's good for our students, keeps them with their peer groups, keeps them in our community, and it's also good ultimately for our budget, which we know is pretty good for today, because it means that those students could likely not have to go out of district to get those same services. The high school is a little bit larger in terms of the list of lines that you see there. A couple of things that are important to draw your attention to with the high school. The first is athletics and student life. So you can see under personnel services, you've got athletics and student life advisors there, should have a half million dollars. And then if you take a look at contractual services, you also see athletics referenced there too, again, as things like referees and trainers and those sorts of things. And finally, athletics were called out again in materials and supplies for, you know, equipment and so on, for athletics program, the high school.
Sorry, just to go back, on Wampanoag. Again, just to further follow my comment on the, the comments that specifically the 20th budget as of October 1st, just looking at, firstly, Wampanoag. Curious, our original budget that we approved at the end over each of the paraprofessionals was 3.801458, but the budget as of October 1st was 3575. Could you explain that difference there?
Oh, we have the PSL, which is in this budget. Yeah, we'll get back to it.
But just because we're going from our original budget of 3801 to the budget of October 1st, 3575, and to a new one of 3720, so there's some significant differences there, it's curious what.
We're going to pull on that with the source.
Well, I do know that we were pulling, this is the first year, fiscal year '18 was the first year of the middle school, so the sixth grade is then now in the middle school. That's one of the reasons why all the elementaries will be high on fiscal year '18.
No, this is '20.
Oh, okay. Well, you asked about '18 too, so we went back to '18.
Yeah, but not in my comment right now. Our fiscal year '20 budget that we approved was 3801458. The budget as of October 1st was 3575, the difference of over $200,000. And then the budget request for this year goes up to the 3720. So there's something happening there, I'm just curious what that means. And then, just as a little one, not a big number, but if you look at the Wampanoag Custodial, I just don't know why it went up from 3,800 to 8,900.
It is the extra, and I should have put it in contractual services. We have $5,000 each individual school at the elementary level that we have for small items, small capital items such as a snow blower and things like that. I usually have that separated, it's called the 5,800 account, and I usually put it in the custodial contractual services line item. I just didn't do that on this one.
I'm happy to see, I was curious. It'd be nice if they could fix the bathrooms with that.
We will. The other ones have it.
It would be nice if they could fix the bathrooms with that $5,000.
Not going to be enough to fix the bathroom, as you know.
So that's the high level of the buildings. Do you want to ask any other specific questions that can pass along to go here and share a little bit more about, again, maybe your questions around, tell us about the new materials that you've purchased for this year or...
You have a question over here?
Sorry?
Yes, I have a question. There'll be, you won't be taking comments in the public after the whole presentation. There'll be time after. I would, I think that line item that I mentioned is pretty consistent throughout all the elementary schools, so maybe, you know, I just explained what in particular was that, you know, drove the cost down, and now it's down. I'm guessing it was probably...
Which line?
Instructional supplies. I'm guessing there was a program change that part of that.
I didn't really answer it. A lot of it came out of IDA, I think, and did some specialty stuff, right, this year.
Okay, so in my FY '19 IDA...
Okay, so in my FY '19 IDA grant, I had a large budget for supplies that goes out to all the schools. And for '20, but for '19, or '21, it's not there, it's redistributed.
That's one of the main reasons why instructional supplies in fiscal year '20 is, because in launch budgeting, we put everything in, into each individual line item, which we get from grants, which we get from all of our revenue sources and everything else you would see. It's all in. This was an influx of materials and supplies, special needs classrooms, from the IDEA grant, which is a federal grant that Diana controls.
It's not the only reason.
Right, that was a lot. Yeah, that was a lot.
Only thing going off.
There was, a lot of that reason was for that. But I'll give it back to the principals.
I have one.
Yeah, I mean, we have, last year, in some difference, one of the things that we do uses like an IXL program, which is a supplemental program, Pushing uses it for grades of four and five, Paddle uses it for a grade as well, so those were incorporated into it. Our mystery science, which is a K through five, those are some of the supplies that we do. We also have been, and I'm sure the current owner of the board is going to also speak to this, but we also have been working on the writer's workshop model. So going through the writer's workshops model, there have been materials that we've needed to use, some notebooks and, you know, sticky notes and things like that to help to implement that. We, you know, standards have slowly, but I shouldn't say slowly, in the last four years of the standards for the major content areas have changed significantly. So we've also been trying to get the supplies that are necessary for our teachers to be able to address those things. So we, you know, with science consumables, the social studies, maybe purchasing mentor texts that go along with our writing program, but also that we can use to integrate into the classroom for other subject areas. So there's been, you know, where we use the instructional line item in order to purchase whatever it is that our teachers are going to need to be able to teach and to address the new standards. So a lot of our money was spent on that. Thank you.
I have a similar question to one I've offered in the past. Again, just comparing the original budget request for fiscal year '20 of Attena High School, athletic staff, student life advisors, we had projected in the group 571. The line item that says fiscal year '20 budget as of October 1st shows an amount of 473, almost $100,000 less. So I'm just not sure why, would have expected, assuming athletic, I'm not sure if the athletic director would go under that, but one would have expected that to increase.
Yep. I'll pull on those stipends and we'll get a look at it for you. Those represent all of, they're all in on the stipends across, let's say it's P D in our contract. So we have estimated stipends that'll be paid out. I'm not sure of the answer to that, but we'll pull up your single one, we'll double check it for you.
Okay.
Yeah, I just had a question on the high school budget. FY '20 was 87,400 for the competition spend some services, and it seemed like it's a huge change from FY '19 and then going forward to FY '21, we have like the 56080 budget is. I don't know, I'm just curious how that, why, how that breaks down, what causes that fluctuation?
I could tell you, Nicole.
Thank you, Peter.
I'm just doing last year's budget, and they did note here that it includes money to replace some of the aging workout equipment in the fitness room, as well as required fee ask fee.
Wouldn't he ask, wouldn't he ask done? We don't pay that fee, that fee is 25.
It was probably a little over 20. We had 22, I think, in the budget last year, and it's probably a place pretty close.
Wouldn't he ask?
Wouldn't he ask?
How was that?
So those are your buildings, snapshot of the buildings. Again, we'll give you that breakout for your specialized programs for you. The next one is probably the one I imagine will spend the most time on. These are your district services, and, you know, we'll definitely take some time to talk about special education tuitions, which I'm sure is the center of the conversation today. But here's just your breakdown of your services and costs for district services. So again, maybe spend a few more minutes on each of the different lines for you. Admin IT SRO operations is exactly that. It's everything from informational technology to cost of our SRO, to all the operational services, district-wide operations of district-wide custodial, those sorts of things, as well as your admin services. Instructional leadership is proportion of the instructional leadership, costs that are on the district end of things, they don't reflect the teaching and learning portion of the job. So those are distributed wherever the teaching and learning occurs in the role, some of that's going to be in middle schools, some in the high school, depending on wherever they are. Again, DESI requires us to allocate the resource to where the resource actually takes place. Operations transportation are predominantly our transportation services, all of our bus drivers as well as our van drivers. The mentor program is just that, the mentor program for our teachers. Quick aside, following through this, any grant that the school district receives from the state or the federal government is obviously realized on your revenue side of your budget, but it also makes sure we reflect it on your cost side of your budget as well. In this particular case, the mentor program is actually just a pedal QA federal grant. So it's money in, money out, right? That is, that's the total amount that we get from the federal government, you'll see that on the revenue side of things, and here on the cost side is the total amount that is spent to pay mentors and enter on that program. Substitutes, so that line has been relatively static, just around $300,000. We did make an uptick here in the FY '21 investment, just a modest uptick, to help address our nursing needs. I think we talked about this at our last meeting, the nursing ratios have been a challenge for us, and while we don't have the resources to hire another full-time nurse, we're trying to work on a way in which we better deploy, more efficiently deploy our staffing, and more importantly, provide additional substitutes for nurses to do things like screenings, field trips, and those sorts of things, so that our ratios remain as high as they can, even while we have nurses pulled away to do all sorts of other things that are equally important for our kids. Contractual services, membership services, these are just that, they are everything from, you know, national memberships to leases of different equipment throughout the district. Copiers is purely just our copiers contract, that varies based on the contract each year. This next line is really important, we'll spend a few minutes on it, it's curriculum and staff development. So that houses two major items in our school district. The first is professional development services. The specific services vary each year, but they're intended to provide support and training for all of our staff. And the second are our large-scale curriculum adoptions. And so in that 215K that you see there, there's about $75,000 dedicated to the investment in K through five new math materials. And I'm turning it over to Kathy a little bit, if you'd like to learn more about what that is. Again, just to the question of what does this number represent? Tell me about the materials and equipment. We'll do exactly that for you in a little bit as well. Teacher course reimbursement is exactly what it says it is, it's teacher course reimbursement, that's per our contract, about $85,000 for reimbursements. IT services, we're a pretty high-tech school district, so it requires us to have IT services, contractual IT services for our school district to make sure that servers have the right maintenance and those sorts of things. Special education summer services is, it's pretty self-explanatory, that's a special education program over the summer. I'll talk about our annual bus lease for you for a little bit, and Peter, certainly feel free to add some more context into the conversation around all things bus leases. So our school district spends about quarter of a million dollars in bus leases each year. Miracle of the past couple of years, we've been talking about ways to share that cost with our colleagues in the town. Ultimately, buses can be a capital expense. Capital expenses, as I'm sure you know, are typically part of our capital plan. Capital plan allocations and appropriations are through the town and usually out of free cash and not of the school district's operating budget. That said, we do leases. You can do a capital lease, and you can have a capital lease as part of the capital budget, but ultimately, that's not the model that our town adopts. And so because we do leases to ensure that the buses are new, it means that the cost ends up being a draw on our operating dollars, which is a draw out of teaching staff or curricular materials or special education services, whatever it might be. The goal has been for a couple of years now to try to find a way to create a shared cost for leases. Ideally, we want to have a shared cost in which it's just a straight shared cost, and that lease would be covered, you know, two-thirds by the school still, because two-thirds of revenue is ultimately to the schools and one-third back to town. We, at this moment with the financial forecast committee, landed on a shared cost and an offset cost. That is, we have a shared cost of the $250,000 for bus leases above the line, get them pulled out, and an offset of that for streetlights, which creates a budget-neutral effect. What that means is, ultimately, we don't gain or lose revenue through this, but it maintains its place above the line as a shared cost. With the goal, as I'm sure you can appreciate, that that becomes just a shared cost over time, as I think this committee has said several times, we believe that it should be. So it's still right now just budget-neutral, that is, it doesn't save us, it doesn't gain us additional revenue, but it's dollars in, dollars out. So what you see there is $250,000 allocated to the cost of your bus leases. What you'll see on the revenue side is a separate appropriation that gets voted at annual town meeting for $200,000 of that pullout resource. So money comes in at 250, money goes out at 250, it covers the cost of your leases for your buses. Want to add more to that, or did I give a general summary?
I think, I think it was pretty good. It's, it's, it sounds a lot more complicated than it is. Essentially, the district has really in the past relied on the capital process to purchase new buses, but since the capital process isn't a sure thing, we never really know if and when we'll be able to purchase new buses. So over the past couple of years, the leadership team and the forecast committee has negotiated with the town to have them basically help pay for our bus fleets. So this is just, as Superintendent said, we're not gaining or losing anything here. It shows here that it's an expense of 250, but really, we're getting that money back from, from the town. So it's really just, as Superintendent said, it's a way for us to ensure that our bus fleet is kept new, that we don't have to rely on the capital process to purchase new buses.
Special education transportation is exactly that, it's special education for students who may require transportation, and those are some of those small vans that you're going to see around the town, that's the cost that you see there for those services. Legal services, we work with a single legal firm, and that's our, just again, cost of legal services each year. HVAC, electricity, plumbing, elevator, exactly what it sounds like, it costs to maintain HVAC systems, plumbing systems. We have specialists come in regularly, especially this type of year when heating systems are, you know, operating sometimes around the block to make sure there's repairs done and family care. Norfolk Aggie is new to us this year in that we have the Norfolk Aggie also above the line as part of your financial forecast, which is senior appendices, and that $12,000 is in our account for the cost of transport students, the transportation of the students who go to Norfolk Aggie are not above the line. So we cover the cost of the transportation and the total cost of tuition essentially for Norfolk Aggie. You know, if a student wants to do animal husbandry, for example, we can offer that here, but there's still a community member in our town, are covered as part of the above the line pullout. Special education outside tuitions, I promised on the next page I'll go through that in more detail for you, but I'd ask you to put it in there for one moment as I go through the rest here. Special education contractual services, so those are services that typically are required for students that aren't necessarily part of an outside tuition or aren't necessarily covered as services that can be provided here and in our schools with our staff. Those vary each year based on just the needs of individual students. So you can see here, subtotal for contractual services there from this year to that year, from this year to '21 is substantially higher. Again, we'll talk more about that in a moment. Materials and supplies are pretty standard each year, so your telephone, control and supplies, those sorts of things are all rolled together, and about $60,000 or so thousand dollars, that varies from year to year. One thing that's important to note there, though, is that that also includes materials and supplies for our VECO program. Again, as a reminder, what we do with grants, all grants come in as revenue, and then they're distributed to wherever those grants are actually spent. And so because our VECO program is not in one school necessarily, it's in all of our schools, some of the equipment and supplies that they purchase go through that, equipment and supply materials line at the district level, because we don't account it for just the halfway school, or just the Pushing school, or just the high school. Those are pretty straightforward. I'm happy to answer any questions you have on them, and then we can do a deep dive into special education tuitions, outside tuitions.
I'd like to back up to the substitute line item. The $15,000 bump, is specific for just nurses, or are we considering the issue of having a lot of substitutes in the classroom?
Yeah, so as you take a look at the appendices, at the end of the budget document, it outlines all of the beyond level services recommendations that the school district has, it's about 1.1 change million dollars. In there is a recommendation to increase the rate for substitutes, and again, not just your substitutes, but all substitutes in general. That is not currently in this budget. This $15,000 reflects just the potential to increase nursing substitutes. And again, not the rate of nursing substitutes, but the number of nurse substitutes that are pulled in.
So is there a formula that you use to, the $15,000, that is specific to nursing?
It's an estimate based on the number of nurses that you may need for doing a number of field trips, as well as keeping a nurse in the building and doing screenings.
And the leases and, there's a jump in $50,000 for membership services and leases, was there a specific item that caused that $50,000?
I'm down, let's take a look at that for you.
And down the bottom of building maintenance and supplies, from FY '19 to FY '20, we're from $24,408.
Right.
I know a lot of people are happy to, you know, who are spending on maintenance, but could you explain the jump? And it goes back down 80.
We're under, oh, sorry.
Mr. Dillon, Bob Dillon, our facilities manager, has taken a lot of the custodial supply items that we buy in bulk purchasing. So we're bulk purchasing here at the district level. So in other words, the paper goods that we buy, the floor wax that we buy, and all kinds of custodial supplies that we buy, we have bulk purchasing now. We were using old gates for a lot of our storage area, and buying, you know, three or four months at a time. We're still going to be able to use some of that, but we're going to have to find some more homes for some of our bulk purchases. But we're still looking to do this, and that's one of the main reasons why we have an increase from last year, from '19 or '18 to '19. You saw that custodial supplies was higher in each individual school, because we used to buy for each individual school. We've decided to bulk purchase, and obviously it gets a little bit cheaper that way, so we're making a little bit better purchasing, and we're understanding what we have, so.
And the copiers, I know we just made new copiers.
Right.
So the $28,000, is that? So, the $28,000, is that, what is that, the $100,000, what is that, is that for maintenance in a contract we done?
No, the contract has maintenance in it. This is now, we were on an old contract, what they called a big buy, for three years in a state contract, where we didn't pay for a per click or a per piece of paper that makes a copy, and we didn't have to pay for maintenance. We're not going to have to pay for maintenance, but we're going to have to pay a per-click charge. So, we do about 550,000 copies per month for the 10 months that we are in session. So, we're going to pay approximately 2.5 to 3 cents for each copy, it all depends on colors and so on and so forth. So, we have a lower lease cost now, but a higher click cost, if that makes sense to you. So, that's the reason why we're up a little bit.
Thank you.
Same number of copiers.
Just a clarification, so if we go back, it's near enough to back, but if we were to look at all the schools where it says custodial, that means the supplies that they're buying for the...
Yeah, specific for their, for their building, yes.
Okay, so that explains why, if you look at '18, you add it all up, it goes, and you compare it to '20, or whatever, I see, okay, I get it.
Yeah, if the senior custodian in that building wants to have, yup.
What's the difference?
There is a difference, yup.
Just a quick question on the numbers for FY20. So, how are we spent to date against the numbers that we have here listed, just from the budget of what's in the special time meeting? And do we think we're going to overspend what we anticipated, or are we going to have some money left over just based on these line items here?
We did an analysis on electricity, and we're coming down a little bit. The middle school is online, now we're getting a better handle on the middle school, and we know when we can go into unoccupied mode, and when we have to go into occupied mode. So, we've got a little bit better schedule. So, I think we're gonna, we did an analysis on that, we think we're going to be about 480,000 by the year end for this year, so there might be about 20 grand there. Natural gas is, I mean, we had probably one of the warmest Januaries on record, knock on wood, so we might have a little bit there.
So, I guess my question is, do we think we'd have money at the end of the year that we could potentially use to free buy some of the supplies that we're looking at for next year, or are we going to end up with nothing at the end of the year, we're going to go for FY21?
I think one, in budgeting and asking me, I think we've taken that into account this year, that we might have some money left over, and we've put it towards next year already in the fiscal year '21 budget, yes. So, the short answer is yes, and those are the places that I'm looking at right now, and hopefully, there's going to be some at each individual school, that we're not going to spend as much as we thought. We're going to probably try to, I mean, you know, the principals have heard me and the department heads have heard me say, question an awful lot of things that go through, and so, we're going to try to not freeze, but, you know, put a little bit of brakes on a little bit, so we can try to prepay for some of the things we need for next year.
And when you look at something like electricity or gas, what do you do? Do you take how much you've spent over the past couple of years and add like 3% or something to give yourself a buffer for what your anticipated cost is?
Well, actually, we have contracts in place. We belong to a collaborative of the area towns around here, run by South Shore Collaborative over in Hingham, and a bunch of us get together and we go out to bid, probably in June, we probably go out to bid, I think it's electricity this year, and natural gas will be next year. And so, we belong to that, and it's a, I think electricity is 10 cents per kilowatt-hour, but that's not the distribution. So, the distribution's probably an additional to National Grid, and we may pay somebody else to be our supplier for electricity, a third party, not National Grid, but we have to pay National Grid for the distribution. So, we do get the benefit of going out to, with a bunch of area towns, for electricity and for natural gas. The same thing with Columbia Gas. We have a third-party supplier for natural gas, all six schools are on natural gas, so we get together and we have a bulk purchasing on that. So, yeah, we locked in the rate for two years typically.
So, in June, we'll know what that rate's going to be for electricity, and then adjust accordingly.
And it goes in December.
Okay.
All right, so it goes by year end.
Yup, no, that makes sense.
So, that's a year-end.
Again, to my question, I'm trying to figure out how that number gets calculated.
Yeah, and I have analysis on, you know, what we're, we're looking at 400, like I said, 480,000 this year in electricity, and we're going to be under the hope in natural gas.
And it's a big item in our budget, that's the Norfolk Aggie, do we, since we're budgeting for half as much as last year, do we have graduates from that, or?
It's not that we're budgeting for half of it. So, again, if you look at your appendices that have the financial forecast that was just approved, whatever it was, Tuesday night of this week, there's about $75,000 of actual tuitions in there for kiddos who are going to Norfolk Aggie. Seventy-five is in there, seventy-two?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two is in there, so 72,000 in there for tuitions, if you will, for Norfolk Aggie kiddos. However, that's above the line, that number gets pulled out before revenues get calculated. What doesn't get pulled out is the transportation for kiddos who are going to go to Norfolk Aggie, that $12,000 represents the transportation. And even if we have additional students who go to Norfolk Aggie, you know, we get those numbers coming in from our middle school counselors who say, like, oh, X number of children have, you know, put in applications. If they put an application in, we assume that they're going to be going, they may not go ultimately, but it's a conservative budget, it's going to be safe for, you know, for a while now. And if additional students do go, that number could potentially go above the line as well, and that $12,000 would typically not change, because we're still sending a vehicle and a driver to and from Norfolk Aggie, unless it changed dramatically, unless you had dozens of kids necessarily, which has not been the case.
I'll just say one, I'll just say one thing on transportation for Norfolk Aggie. Another cooperative, we get together with a bunch of other towns, and, you know, Mossfield, Abington, actually, Abington runs it, and Whitman, and Whitman Hansen, and so on and so forth, and actually, the children that go to Norfolk Aggie from Situitt get picked up over at the Park and Ride in Rockland. That's where the bus go, that's what we're paying for. That's run by, Abington kind of spearheads it, but it's usually typically a first student, so we pay from there.
So, I was hoping that, again, just asking about what the programs are, Kathy can maybe take a few minutes and share with you a little bit about, about $75,000 worth of the curriculum and staff development lines dedicated to new elementary maths materials, and so, she can share with you a little bit about that, and we can answer, you know, questions that you might have, so I'll turn over to Kathy a little bit.
Okay, so, can you hear it? Okay. So, last year, we started the process of looking for a new math program, because we were using Envision Math 2012, which the standards changed in 2017, and all of the licenses were expiring. So, we started the process in the fall, and I like to do research, so what I did is, I went to people at the state level, because I do MCAS, which I've worked with them for 12 years now doing MCAS, and I went to their math people, and I said, point me in the right direction, where do I find the information on the best elementary math programs that you guys are seeing or working across the state? So, they gave me resources, and so what I did is, I started looking at those resources and came up with a list of seven different programs. So, the math council and I vetted those resources, and we ultimately ended up that Bridges, Eureka, and Ready Classroom were the three that we felt best met the needs of our district and our students. So, last year, during the early starts and during PD time, what we did is, we put together binders, and we had gotten samples of the materials, and we gave the materials for all three programs out to the teachers. And so, the teachers had all the materials in their hands by January, and we asked them to look at them, try lessons in their classroom, and then in May, we asked them to make a decision on what program they'd like to move forward with, since we needed to pick something and move forward. So, Eureka was the one that ended up coming out on top. So, what we did in the spring, I asked for teachers who would be willing to be early adopters, who would try the program this year, that way they can help the other teachers as we move forward. So, we had, let's see, we're up to 33 teachers in the district that decided to use the program this year. The quote that you see is so that all the teachers in the district next year will have the materials. So, it's a pretty reasonable program, it, you know, includes the books for the students that have your problems you would do in class, your exit tickets, application problems, you know, it's all included in this. It includes the teacher books, there's teacher's books that go with all of this. It includes the company coming out for two full days of PD, and it includes the manipulatives, because with this program, there's manipulatives you use, so I've got the quote for that, which is included in that. And it also includes an online component. So, the online component, and they're giving us a really good deal on that, this year they didn't charge me at all for it. The online component allows teachers to use digital assessments, and so, what we did this year is, we got it for grades two to five, because what we can do with that is, this program aligns with the standards so well, that we can do assessments, we can pull data by class, by student, by standards. So, it really will allow us moving forward to start personalizing learning in terms of if we're seeing a student that is struggling in third grade, it's got this digital platform that the third-grade teacher can actually go in and access second-grade foundational materials to work with that student and to move them forward. Just a little bit of data to share with you, you know, we had these teachers trying it, it was, it's very different. So, it was, I give the teachers credit, I know Nicole Ashley is one of the teachers that is using it, but it was interesting, because our Symphony data, you know, we use Symphony as a benchmarker. So, our data last year, in the fall, we had 112 kids who were at risk with the Symphony benchmark. In the January benchmark, we had 118. So, we didn't improve, we actually added a few. This year, we started with 136 kids identified as being at risk with the Symphony benchmark. We just got our January data, we're down to 46 district-wide. When I looked at the data, there is a correlation, especially at the younger grades, with teachers that are using this program, being able to take those at-risk kids and bring them into at least borderline category, so it definitely is more rigorous, it does a better job with number sense. So, like I said, that, that cost is to implement the program K to five across all four elementary schools.
Thank you, that sounds like a good lead point.
You know, I think it's pretty, so, so, beginning next year, all four elementary schools will be, are they required to use that program?
Yes, that's what we're moving forward with.
Okay, and I'm just curious, in the selection of that program, is there any consideration to how that will work when the students go to middle school? Is there any correlation between that program and what's being offered in the middle school?
Can you hear me? Liz Grandal, Department Chair for 6th through 12, been working with this, I spent time as of, when they first started looking at the programs that in the fall, so knowing that sixth grade's there, we currently use a hybrid in sixth grade of Envision Math and some teacher-created curriculum. Knowing that the, if this is approved, the adoption of the PD, our sixth-grade teachers have been into the elementary schools and also will be trained for this. The purchase point, if you will, for our sixth grade is just around $2,000 for some consumables, but they're interested in being part of it, so yes, we have a plan in place, knowing that some of our fifth-grade students this year are working with Eureka, our sixth-grade teachers were intrigued by that. So, yes, we have a plan in place to move forward with putting, if not all of the pieces, some of the pieces. But again, it comes with a cost. The cost that we won't embark on next year at the middle school is the digital platform, but we hope to see how it works in the elementaries, and then hopefully request that next year. So, if you want to make notes of that, then I'll read them.
So, you said there would be two PD days for the teachers K to five, or would some of the sixth grade?
Sixth grade can also come in, because I'm allowed to have like X number of people, and I've already talked to the company. They're actually a very good company to work with, because they're nonprofit, so they're not like, you know, nickel and diming you, you know, for stuff. They've been very, very good and very accommodating, because even on some of the materials for next year, they kind of gave me a deal on some of the stuff, because I said to them, you know, we're trying to roll this out, because then the costs become less, once you've got everything in place.
Thank you.
Just continuing on my theme of this, this year 20 budget at special time meeting versus our original budget, again, the numbers are small, but the percentages are large. Under the district services, telephones, we just budgeted 25, but the revised number was 62, which percentage-wise is very significant here. Again, it's not a big dollar, so I'm just curious.
Which?
Telephones.
Material supplies.
Under material supplies, first line, we budgeted 25 last year, but this number says 62. Again, not a big number, but a big percentage.
Curriculum supplies, and I have to come back and take a minute. I'm going back to the numbers, 20. It's still here. It's not there, so I'll have to get back here.
Okay.
Might have been a distribution.
Kathy, Liz, thank you guys very much for the summary there for the maths. So, the next large item in district cost, obviously, is special education out of district cost, and it's the central topic of conversation with all things budget, so we wanted to do a drill-down of that information for you, not only to understand what all of those factors are, but also to give you some, some drill-down data about where that trend has been and where it's going. So, first, a little bit about what special education out of district costs are, to begin with. What you see here on the left-hand side of your placement type walks you through the kinds of placements that a student may require, because ultimately, we as a school district here in our schools are unable to provide the services that a student may need. We are part of the South Shore Educational Collaborative, we talked a little about that at our last special education meeting, that's a collaborative of 10, potentially now 11 school districts that all work together to contribute to a special education school with staffing that focuses on some key disabilities and key programs. A private day program is a private institution, also typically schools in the area that provide services that are really specialized to the individual needs, and residential is very much the same, except that a student lives there versus goes there daily. If you follow these rows out from '18, '19, '20, '21, these are the actual enrollments of students. We're very careful as we have these conversations about special education out of district, that we're a very small community and small district, so I know there's a lot of interest and emphasis on, like, give us the drill-down data, we're always happy to do that, and we want to be cognizant of the fact that in some cases, the number is one, and so we want to be considerate of students' families' privacy as well when we give that information, so you can see that consolidated accordingly. Last is the, the middle, in terms here, is the total out-of-district number of students. So, as you can see, from FY18 through till FY21, the actual number of kiddos who have required special education out of district services is actually going down, because we've been serving more of our students in our special education programs, ILCs, the PLCs, the GEM programs, IEXs, and so on. What we also have here is the total tuitions, and that is the total cost of collaborative, private day, residential, all together in our school district, and you can see that number has continued to rise. And a point of note that I think is especially important, FY20 and FY21 both indicate projected, because this is a number that's always changing. We as a school district don't drive an IEP meeting. An IEP meeting is, remember, is a team conversation about the needs of a student, and it's focused on that child with all the people, all the adults who care about that child. District certainly has representation at that meeting, but that is not... District certainly has representation at that meeting, but that is not, um, that number, so even FY twenty, is not a number we can just name and identify on like an electric rate where we can say, this is the way they're locked into, therefore, this is always going to be that number. I know that can be challenging and frustrating, that number can change. But I appreciate, you know, the special educations team and their effort, their work on making sure they've got as most up-to-date a number as they possibly can at any given moment in a school year. The one number I do want to draw your attention to is this year in bold, is the average tuition per student. So while the number of students who have required out-of-district services has declined, the average tuition has actually increased. And again, just to refresh our memories, there's really two factors that go into that. The first is the actual cost of tuition. Uh, in particular, private day and residential have the ability as institutions to change their costs. They can do that with notice to a school district, but a school district has limited locus of control when it comes to, um, disagreeing with whatever cost they're ultimately going to offer. So some of that, uh, change, uh, is influenced by the actual cost and changing cost by the tuitioned institutions. But a large majority of that cost, tuition per student, is just a reflection of the need. So a more significant need has a more significant cost, a less significant need has a less significant cost. So this chart, as we see here, is that we've got fewer students who are ultimately requiring those out-of-district services, but that their needs are more significant over time. You can see the percent increase over time and obviously overall increase in tuition. Now again, that fluctuates because each individual student is accounted for, and every time there's a change, a student adds, a student changes program, that number changes accordingly. The other thing I want to share with you, if I can, is a little bit about Circuit Breaker. So, uh, those are not included in Circuit Breaker, the next page has a little bit about it there. I'm going to keep it here, my summary, if you'd like. So Circuit Breaker is a mechanism that the state has in place to provide school districts with a reimbursement for substantial special education costs. They set a foundation cost for students, and essentially, if you spend about four times that cost, the state reimburses, reimburses you a proportion of the cost after four times that foundation. We get that resource in arrears by one year. So the Circuit Breaker that you see projected for FY twenty-one, for example, is reflective of the Circuit Breaker qualifications for our students the previous year, and so on, so one year back. The state uses Circuit Breaker, um, as part of the appropriation mechanism, that is, it's currently appropriated at about seventy-two percent, and the goal is that it should be appropriated about seventy-five percent of those costs, but each year, that's dependent on the state's appropriation of the actual bucket of money that can help. Lastly, I want to acknowledge that this has been a pretty substantial increase over the past couple of years in students with significant needs and the costs for those students with significant needs outside of the school district. So there's two things that I think we should be thinking about as district and through our budget that will not only help us now, but hopefully into the future as well. The first is just the collaboration with our town to establish a special education reserve fund, it's sometimes called a special education stabilization fund. What that does, it acts as a capital stabilization fund. A community will put funds into that account, if you will, over time, and then, when needed, so when there is a substantial increase in cost in out-of-district placements, um, you can draw on those funds. Think of this sort of like your, you know, your rainy day fund, and communities have it all the time in Calhoun. So if a road washes out, or, you know, when our community, a seawall breaks, there's a fund that the town continually puts resources in, and you can draw from when an unanticipated cost comes up. Because we're a department of the town, we are able to keep a balance of anything, right? Any unused fund just goes back to the town, it goes back to free cash. So this would allow us to essentially keep, um, a balance, keep a account, keep like a savings account that can be used specifically to address these kinds of needs. That's something that's already begun initial discussions with, with the town for, and we're hopeful to have that available, um, for vote at annual town meeting. That doesn't necessarily give us resources that we can use for twenty-one, but it will allow you to use those resources in twenty-two and beyond. And the other, I know I sound a little bit like a broken record here, is that we consider hiring an additional special education teacher and specialized paraprofessional to support the expansion of our GEMS program into the middle school. Again, we have a number of high-quality special education programs throughout the district, and expanding those programs, first of all, it's good for kids, they provide students with the services that they need, and they're better for our budget in that, uh, it means students have a local option versus an out-of-district option to get the services that they require. It's a high-level summary, I'm sure you've got lots of questions, uh, we'll be ready for it.
Just a quick question, so if, if we do expand that, the GEMS program, which is great, would that, would we be, I don't know if you can answer this, but it, would you be able to potentially bring back some kiddos that are out of the district?
I can talk, yeah, I can talk to that. So, I looked at the current students in our Jenkins program, all the way back to K to current five. If there isn't a program for our students starting next year, um, we will have an expenditure, potentially of a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, just two issues. If we look at that over the five years, if there isn't a program, and obviously every year, we'll look to propose a program, but if there isn't a program, then these students who are currently being serviced in district and being very successful, just tuitions over the next five years could cost us close to six hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. So that's a cost savings by keep, helping to keep these students in. But that's not the only, that's not the only reason. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that if we have this program, we continue to provide for our students a program, as Ron said, that is significant. It does save us costs, but we also have found that our students have found the success and that they're learning the skills to be included with their peers in the general education setting. That is where most of these students are spending their day, even though the program is built to be able to be a self-contained program. It's providing the, the resources for these students, significant resources, in a least restrictive environment, a mandate from DESI that we value and we follow. We want to, um, if, if we remove our students from our district to a more restrictive setting, away from their peers, that they have been working so hard to be a part of, that they feel part of a community now and not, uh, different, if you will? We want to honor the work and the growth that they've made, and if we're saying that we have to now, all these years that they've been working in this program, and it's over four years of this program, it's been successful, and we can't provide it for them at the middle school, I just feel that we're going backwards. We're, we're, we're not honoring their growth, and it just doesn't feel right. So, yes, there's huge fiscal savings, but for me, it's a moral and ethical decision to move this program forward.
I have a question about the, um, average tuition.
Yep.
Amount. Does that include the collaborative in, in that figure, or is that just the private and residential?
It's all three.
It's all three.
Mm-hmm. And the collaborative's not just South Shore Collaborative, we send students to Pillars and Area Collaborative and North River Collaborative?
I mean, because generally, the collaborative tuition is, are stay, are the, they stay the same throughout the whole year?
They do stay the same throughout the whole year, and they are less than private day or residential, however, they are creeping up year to year as well. So my, um, my most, we range from, um, fifty thousand to sixty-five, sixty-eight thousand in collaborative tuition for a student.
And I have a question about the Circuit Breaker line?
Yes.
Um, with the increase from FY twenty to FY twenty-one, the total tuition goes up, but the Circuit Breaker is at, the reimbursement is less than?
Yes. So thresholds for us to meet also increases. And with that threshold increasing, we also are never guaranteed until the very end what the percentage is that they will, that the state is going to reimburse. So I budget conservatively at the seventy-two percent because that's been more consistent. The mandate by the state, by the regulations, is to fund it at seventy-five, but not every year are we able to get seventy-five, and so that's why you see that.
Thank you.
It's also, it's also a year behind. A Circuit Breaker is a year behind, so our cost in fiscal year nineteen is what we got Circuit Breaker for in fiscal year twenty. Uh, year-end cost, and Diana's going to be doing, um, some Circuit Breaker calculations for extraordinary relief now, we'll have a better idea of what we're going to get other than because it's a year behind, uh, from fiscal year twenty. So we're estimating right now that it's nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand. It could go up, it could go down based on the number of students in thresholds, so it's a year behind.
And we wouldn't get that money until the following year?
Correct.
Right.
Correct. And in special education, I know we don't like to hear this, and Ron did speak to this, it always depends. It depends on IET team meetings, it depends on students' needs, it depends on when, um, private and residential day placements request to the operations committee at state level for increased pricing. While we know they might be requesting, we don't know how much, um, until it's that very last minute. So, um, when I calculate my projected fiscal year tuition, I add on a three percent increase. So my FY twenty-one is at a three percent increase with the calculation of seventy-two percent off a foundation from Circuit Breaker. Um, that's, that's the best that we can do at this time because it is always a, a union target, it really is. And it's hard to explain, as Ron said, because it is so individualized, and we are such a small community.
Have we looked at it as a district and tried to join other collaboratives, just to see if it made sense for our students?
We haven't. Um, we can certainly do that. The cost savings for tuitions, you know, might help, but, um, I can certainly look into that without a doubt. We, we haven't had that discussion.
Okay. I was just curious, because we had that conversation with Menhanson this week, if it made sense to join North River or someone else, you know, either to get situated in that collaborative for our students, or just to be a part of it in general?
Right. So we have students in the class, but then we're paying the non-member rate.
Right.
And then for the, the raise in the average tuition, without getting into the specifics, is this based on, it's like the individual student needs, or is it more the rising costs of the different out-of-district placements?
So it's both. Mostly it's the rising needs every, the rising tuition costs every year, and then, um, each year, as students' needs change, we are having to add services. So for example, a student who's in a, in a placement, they or may not, throughout that year, require, uh, one-to-one services, um, may or may not require more home services, may or may not require other things that, because of their, um, circumstances, change. Uh, and so then, what we budgeted changes because I have to increase that for the service that is required, that an IET team made that decision based on the data for that child, they need that at this time.
I have a follow-up question, if you'd like to, uh, question. Can you give an example of, uh, private tuition, uh, rate, amount that went up mid-year that wasn't related to the needs of the students?
Yes. Um, I don't want to call out the name of the school because it all impacts the amount of students. So, one second, let me just look at that.
Because I know one of the issues is that these schools raise the tuition mid-year.
Correct. So, I'll just find the right one. I apologize. Yes. I'm just looking for that, for the schools, where I, I did two lines for each student. So, um, sorry, I'm just looking for my, my list here where I had, for each of those students, I did two lines. One was, so they increased November one. I don't have that number, and I, I should have that number, and I, I can't get that to you. But for some students in that one particular school, that increased as of November one, I have them budgeted as two lines. One was the July one through, um, October thirty-first amount, and then the increased amount of November one to June thirty. Um, so you may, if, if, you know, on my charts that I keep track, that is how I, um, how I did it. Now, I, I had it, and I don't know where it went, so I apologize, but I can get that to you.
So when you project out how much tuition will be, do you take into consideration those schools that historically have raised their tuition?
So it's not, it's not a, um, it's not like this one school every year keeps doing that, it's, we get a chart from the, um, OSD, the Operation, uh, Make Your Call Found It. So, um, for one particular bill, um, school, right, so, um, just try, yes, this is the one, I'm just, um, their day rate, you know what, I can, I can pull up the day rates. Just take a minute. But, but not every, so what happens is on this chart, they color code and say, this school may, may go up this year, or is going to potentially ask for an increase, they're not telling us by how much. And every year, that chart fluctuates. So, uh, it may be a school that we're in, it may not be a school that we're in. So that's.
That's the one.
Yes, thank you.
Three sixty-two and four thirteen.
Thank you very much. So that particular school's day rate went from three hundred and sixty-two dollars, forty-seven cents a day, to four hundred and thirteen dollars and twelve cents a day. So that is significant. And that started November one, and that was, you know, we've just given a letter.
Do we get a breakdown of what that raise in cost is due to?
They, uh, we can go and ask for that, absolutely. Um, when I called that school's CEO, actually, to talk about this with them, um, and, and, just really kind of pushed back, they were less, uh, willing to give me more information, but certainly, you know, pretty much admission for anything, so.
DESI allows for us to, uh, go to a hearing there, uh, at DESI, they have to like hear, that's, DESI allows us to go to the hearing and say, hey, we would like you to not, uh, raise those rates. They have a track record of always allowing the rate to raise. So we've gone, and we said, well, at a certain point, we can stop the table and say, we'd like you to not raise the rates, and they do anyway. So, uh, there is a mechanism to express your displeasure, but maybe not a mechanism to halt or raise rate. I just want to underscore again, I appreciate we're sort of on the rates here, the number there, though, the large majority of the number is just the services that kids need, right? So if a kiddo needs a one-to-one, regardless of the rate, that is going to be more expensive than not having a one-to-one.
No, I just wanted just in the school, if, if they just randomly raised a rate not related to the services that the student needs, and we're kind of, they know that we have to pay.
A lot of their arguments are maybe the salary to, for their, their personnel kinds of things, or, um, just building upkeep, things like that. So it's not always directly related to the student's programming, it's, it's related to the program, the, you know, the building, the service. Yeah. If that makes sense.
Yeah. Um, I have a couple of questions. First of all, um, I appreciate the, uh, the budget for both the increase, the GEMS program with the middle school, I think that that makes a lot of sense. I just want to be sure, um, how would that collaborative substantially center classroom and in doing so, would that eventually just have one person in that classroom?
Right, so no. That program is set up for the capacity to be self-contained if needed, but all of our students are integrated into the general classrooms with support. students are integrated into the general classrooms with supports.
Okay.
For Gates, we're looking at potentially two to four students, and Ryan can also talk about that. So a student moving on, and currently students who are receiving supports but could really utilize more support that this program will provide. So it's no, it's not for one student.
Okay, great. No, I think, I think it's a very necessary addition to the budget, and I think that it will be great. Obviously, we need to have a, to financially make more of a minimum number of students to hopefully we can do whatever the number is, three probably, I'm guessing, something like that. Along those lines, do we have any data, I think I've asked this before, do we have any data on when the majority of our kids move or transition to out-of-district placements? Are they moving from fifth to sixth, or is there a particular year?
No. I, I say no, and we have a high rate of hospitalizations for students at our middle school and then our high school. And really, it's been more, our middle school has been mostly impacted. And again, another reason in national for this program. But some of our students, for whatever reason, this is the age and grades that things come into, more mental health concerns come into play.
But in general, like, I understand you have the, the ILC kids, they're transitioning into the middle school program, you're saying, are we seeing those kids move to out-of-district placements more than other grades?
No, not at all. We have a very good, very strong Gates program. We worked really hard to collaborate with when we started that program with the ILC and with families, but no, we don't see those students not then transitioning to Gates.
Okay. I'm just trying to identify, I'm in full support of the, this GEM program working at the middle, so I think it's needed. I just want to make sure that there aren't other areas of our special department that could potentially either keep kids in district or attract others to, to send up programs.
Yeah.
So now, okay. Going back to my common theme of comparing last year's budget to the fiscal year 20, I think the real question for me has been and continues to be, we would budget fiscal year 20, 287, 2910, and then the fiscal year 20 budget wrapped in the special town meeting would be 3797041, almost a million dollar difference.
Yes.
And if I compare the original budget, 287, 2910 of last year, to this year's, it's a change of 1.3 million.
Yeah.
So with an average tuition of approaching 90,000, I just can't back into those numbers as to why this is a big increase from year over year.
Right. So I wasn't as conservative, unfortunately, in that 2 million budget, and probably, obviously, needed to be more conservative. I was more factual than projecting, and so that's what happened. Then, of course, as we've said, common theme, students' needs change, and that's what happened.
Just add something to that, again, for Diana's sake, and, you know, I appreciate the, the conservative there. That conservative nature, he's both in terms of dollars, but also just hopeful, right? So when we take a look at all those students, Diana's got her list of kiddos who may or may not go out of district, I think there's sometimes this desire to hope that they stay. And that's, you know, any person who's been in an IEP meeting or worked with students with disabilities, there's this hope that we, we as a teacher, as a school, as a school district, can provide those services and provide those needs, so.
Yeah, and I think.
It comes from a good place.
I can talk about that even the same, in the same way. So this year's budget, I always meet with, on a very regular basis, with the schools, with our evaluation team chairs, they give me the heads up of kids that may be popping, if you will, students who I may need to in the future consider for replacement. This year, they are, we are being conservative in that they've been included in our budget. That year, they were not, they were on my radar, but not definite, and I was only putting in definite.
I just, I, I bet, actually, I've been thinking a lot about this, and I wanted to lead off, and I sure have. I know that our district is in full support of providing needs and services for every kid. I feel like as a community, as a district, we'll do anything to provide for these kids. I always say it, and I know Ron had mentioned it before, but in full disclosure, I have a son who's in our district. I get it. This is a very challenging line item for every single district, including ours. But I feel very strongly that everyone in this room wants to do what's best for our kids. So this is not anything against these particular kids and these families, it's just in my interest, I just, I had a hard time trying to figure out why we missed so much. And I think that we're thankful that we received some additional funds from the state last year, we were able to overcome some of this deficit. I still don't understand exactly how we were able to pay for it. In this budget, it would be helpful to know how we came up with additional million dollars that we didn't budget for. I'm assuming if I add up all those attractions in the other lines, that potentially it comes up with that. So I have no issue with the amount of dollars that were spent. I have zero. It's just why we missed so much in that budget. We could have got ourselves into some significant trouble without the additional funds last year and this year.
And I appreciate that. And I think, you know, we've learned from a bad experience or from an unfortunate experience, and we're moving forward with a much more conservative budget.
I appreciate your acknowledgement of all that.
Yeah.
It's definitely our trickiest line, I don't know.
And I understand that. I live it every day.
But you're also, you know, with feelings and emotions, your needs, and it's not just numbers.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you for learning how to live.
You're welcome.
So again, we acknowledge the, that detail is here as well for folks to be able to read through. I want to change gears, though, as we can move our warning on. That closes out the costs for the school year, and what you see in the next part, Part 4, are all the funding and resources, right? So we run this just like a ledger, costs on one side, resources on the other side. So on page 20 is just your executive summary. It's all of the resources, we'll walk you through that, and then certainly, you know, the questions that you might have. Your resources are broken out based on source of resource, so local and state aid, and that $40 million mark that comes directly from our taxpayers here in this community, their support, as well as all the state aid that comes from Beacon Hill. That number is arrived at through the financial forecasting, which again is Tuesday night, Wednesday night. We talked already about the bus leases, that's the money in, money out, you can see there of our bus leases. Same federal grants, about 2.3 million come from both Massachusetts as well as federal appropriations that get filtered through DESI and then ultimately to districts. And offsets are revolving accounts and any fees that come into the school district at about 1.25 million each year. The two little graphs you see there just give you a sort of historical context. The very first is the total amount, so you can see each year that that total amount has gone up. The second graph, though, is an interesting one as well, is the percent change in contribution in local and state aid from year to year. So you can see back in 2015, the number was just shy of 7% change, and you can see that fluctuating throughout the year. Point in case for FY '22. Again, we're a year and a half out for FY '22. So it's typical that this graph ends with a bit of a dip because we, in general, try to budget conservatively, that number may likely improve and go up, both in terms of heels of growth around the town and on the heels of the SOA, which was just approved from Beacon. One other thing, maybe for the sake of folks in the audience, our revenue for local and state aid is broken out, appendix, gosh, A or B, it's right at the end of your, your sheet there. And it might be beneficial to take a moment to just walk you through that if you're not familiar with it. I know time is valuable, so I won't spend too much time on it, but here's just a super quick summary of how that works in our town. We don't do net school spending like most school districts and towns do. We have a much more straightforward, clear model. So if you look at it in big chunks for a second, you can see this thing that says sources in all revenue at the very top. That's exactly that. It's all of the revenue that comes into local and state aid. So you think about that as taxes, the word cherry sheet here is like the way that state aid is broken out, you know, five assessments, local receipts, all of it gets sort of appropriated together and aggregated together there. So if you look at like FY '21, for example, it's just over 78 million. There's some uses that get pulled out of that, so some of your, you know, economic development and your offsets and overlays. But it's the shared costs that we find ourselves oftentimes spending the most of the time kicking around and debating. Shared costs are costs that benefit typically both school and town, and that's the way that your budget is broken out. And so things like insurance gets pulled out of there, capital stabilization gets pulled out of there, you know, the road gets washed out, we needed to get kids to school, the town is, because of the road to town. Morpheus compensation, again, the school district has over 500 employees, you have the largest number of employees, the town certainly has a high number of employees as well. So all of those things get pulled out of the total revenue, and then you're left with, in this case, $60 million or so. And it's broken out simply by two-thirds and one-third. Two-thirds of that resource ultimately goes to the schools, again, just over 500 employees for our school department, and then the town share about a third of it. So I share that with you just to give you, and again, I know the board from here with this exquisite detail, but I share that with you just to give you context for how you get that $40 million number that is the local and state aid. So when I go to it here, this number that you see on page, what is it now? Page 20, up here on the upper right-hand corner for the FY '21 budget of last, $40,206,060 is a combination of all of that local and state aid aggregated with all of those backouts of the line. That said, total resources are currently estimated at about $44 million for next year. And again, that reflects the governor's most up-to-date numbers that came in just at the end of last week. The next page just gives you a little bit of context, which I think is helpful. So, you know, as Ms. Brandellini had mentioned, we want to, oftentimes we find ourselves wanting to compare us to other districts, right? And while I appreciate every district is unique and different, this gives you a little snapshot as to the per pupil spending for our district, and A, districts that are within our local region, and B, districts within the Commonwealth that are like situate in the kind, in the way that they serve similar populations of kiddos and/or have roughly the same number of students and/or are a similar socioeconomic grouping that we are. So for example, you might see Wilmington there, and say, well, we're not anywhere near Wilmington. No, but Wilmington in terms of the district profile is actually quite similar to situate, even though you're not geographically near Wilmington. Other note on this that's helpful to keep in the back of your mind, the dates on those are accurate. Sometimes they get questions, what do you mean, is 2018 there? 2018 is the only, is the most updated data that DESI has when we pull all of this information. So like, circuit breaker, that's one year in arrears, DESI's district data in a lot of places are significantly two years per year, right? So you see 2018, 19 per pupil spending, and in 2019, a roll in some group percentages, that is the most updated info that we have for that data in that chart. But it just gives you a snapshot as to where situate stands in comparison to spending per pupil along with some other school districts. It's helpful context. I'd like to just break down some of the revenue, and again, I know we've done this year after year, so I won't, it's excruciating detail, but if you have questions, stop me. So this is the state and federal grants. Again, these are through grants, some of them are state-oriented, some of them are federal, that go into state to us. You can see there's a number of grants that situate used to have that we simply no longer qualify for or have been discontinued. We keep them on the ledger in the event that they come back up, so you can see the historicals there. You can give me a minute on each of them. Title 1 is a federal grant, it's federally appropriated, it's essentially a grant that provides resources to districts based on socioeconomic status for students. We don't receive a lot in Title 1, but we receive it annually, and that typically goes for supplemental programming. It's important to notice that for most grants, especially federal grants, there's a rule around called supplement, not supplant. Essentially means that you have to use these resources to provide something in addition to students. You can't in a jam use these resources to like offset an existing cost, right? So when we were taking a look back in January, we said, oh wow, we have some significantly high costs. You can't just go grab some of these federal grants and just offset some old cost with new federal money. Does that make sense? Title 2A, we talked about, that's the mentor program, it's money in, money out for supporting mentors. The IDE grant is the, probably our largest federal grant that comes in, and it's designed to provide resources for a wide range of things. If I'm correctly wrong, I think this year's resources are allocated predominantly to this uptick in out-of-district services. So if you have out-of-district services costs, you can allocate federal dollars to offset some of those costs. So to Mr. Gates' question about how do you overcome some of these increased costs, some of it can be federal grants. Not all of it, but it allows us to catch up in some ways. ECC grant is exactly that, that's resources that were designed to dedicate to supporting early childhood program. I want to note, it's different than our full-day kindergarten program, the grant is no longer in existence. Special education, early childhood, also to support special education interventions at early ages for students with disabilities. The improvement grants, it's actually similar to Title 2A, and small dollars that typically come into that, but the idea is the same, provide resources to support to the adults who ultimately provide resources to support for kiddos. I know we've talked a lot about MEKO. MEKO, we are one of 33 districts in the Commonwealth that participate in the MEKO program. We continue to be community partners with MEKO. We actually worked with MEKO and DESI last year to rewrite formula for which MEKO grant is allocated now to per pupil basis. So all of the funds that come in from MEKO are dedicated to providing services for our MEKO students, as well as to offset the costs in staffing, because MEKO students are in youth enrollment, and therefore we have to increase in staffing. Talked a lot about circuit breaker. For those that are really interested to learn more about it, though, I also put the link right from DESI, so you can learn more about circuit breaker, how it's calculated, how it works, how it's appropriated in arrears each year. Go to the next page, this is probably the one folks want to spend the most time on, particularly spend the most time on, which is our offsets. And again, I'll just name it upfront, as a public school district who prefer not to have to charge a single fee for a single thing, we want to make sure that all kids have access to all programming. I know with myself, there are some fees for the programs that I wouldn't be able to go to participate myself. That said, we're looking at about 1.2 or 1.3 million dollars in overall offsets, that is fees charged that come into the school district that support all of our programs. So removing all of those fees would mean some potential impact to a wide range of programs. A little breakdown for you, your full-day K program runs at about 1.2, 1.3 million dollars a year, so the fees make up about half of that overall cost. It's not the entire cost of our program, but it covers about half of it. Non-resident tuition, so if we have a special education program in which a student from another town may qualify and it's their need, we charge a tuition, just like any other out-of-district service provider would, to that town, that tuition comes to our school district to offset the costs for whatever the program or services are that we provide Athletic, athletic and athletic fees in general, so again, these are applied for the cost of coaches, they're not the entire cost of all of our coaches, but they offset a proportion of the cost of our coaches. Sports events receipts, so if you go to a game and there's a charge at the door for, you know, the ticket or what have you, you can see the list of rates there for adults and students and so on. We bring in approximately $20,000 each year, and usually offsets the equipment's cost for all of our programs. We run about 72,000 dollars for all of the sport equipment costs, so it's a small portion of the total cost for all the equipment for our sports programs. ECC tuition, again, the fees only support a small proportion of the overall program, and you can see the fees there. And then bus fees, the same is true, bus fees, it offsets a proportion of the overall cost to transport all of our students. Side note that's helpful, keep in the back of your mind, bus fees do not necessarily address the bus lease, sometimes people want to. address the bus lease, sometimes folks want to complete the two of those, because those are separate line items and separate revenue sources. Again, the bus fees comes in off the financial forecast. Tried to keep that about five minutes for questions we have on revenues, offsets, grants, and net.
Just have a couple, Rod, on the forecast, for the Ws, is that? I'm asking first, and I'll decide. Are those being public or private? I was part of that team the past year, and I came to the most recent one, just curious if those are, citizens can come or not.
Yeah, the public needs.
Okay. So with that being said, I think that this forecast process, for anyone at home that they be watching, or anyone out here, this is what you need to pay attention to. I think oftentimes it gets overlooked, but this is really important, and there's a, you can see the members of that committee at the most recent meeting, there's generally a few more there. This is how the majority of our revenue, or how our school district gets funded. If you want to get involved, or if you want to make sure you get the most for the, what's best for the schools or our equal share, this is what you, this is what you should spend your time on, maybe try to attend the meetings. The meetings, there's not that many, there's maybe starting in September, maybe there's four meetings in total, but this is what drives the majority of our revenue. The more accurate this is, the more input they have, we can better predict the revenues we're going to receive. So if I can just give anyone else there any advice, this is what you should probably pay a lot of attention to, and I don't, I think sometimes it gets overlooked. So that's my filter box there.
Just one silly question on the, it's such a small one, I'm just curious, sport events, receipts, does, wouldn't we pay to go to a hockey game? Does that go to MIAA, or does that come back to the town?
Goes to the rink.
Goes to the rink, right?
It goes to the rink.
How come?
To pay for officials. We don't, we don't take charge of the officials when it's played at Hopewa, but when, so all that money that their, the rink is taking in will go to the officials that they're paying. It's different than any other.
Right, so all the other, we usually are just our home games, essentially, it's sort of odd events that are held at a neutral site or whatever.
Correct. I was just curious. And we'll split this, this coming year with Hingham. We split the Thanksgiving Day game after expenses. So we split with Hingham this year, after the expenses that we had, police officers, gate, you know, gate people and all that stuff. That's the way it goes for Thanksgiving Day game for every town throughout the Commonwealth. So next year it goes to Hingham. But we also have a home field next year, which is great. We'll be ready to play.
The whole regular season, you mean?
Regular season.
Regular.
Regular season, we had to go to Norwell, wasn't Peter? We had to go to Norwell for football games.
Norwell, two games.
Coacit, you know, all our friends around here, we had home games in a lot of different places.
I know there's a lot of items on revolving accounts, are, what the actual is, are more than the budget. I assume you are conservative.
Right.
Do you use historic numbers, or?
No, especially when it comes to the out-of-district placement from other, other district places, non-resident. Those are predicted by Diana in her team for the IXL program, the ILC program, the PLC program, or any program we have that is specialized, if we bring in a student from Norwell, Hingham, Mossfield.
I'm just looking at, like, what's projected is significantly less than like the F-19 plan that's been actual, so it's just, you're just being conservative.
Yeah, no.
In hope.
So many of our students have actually aged out, they became 22, so those tuitions are no longer in existence. Every, all the time, I'm promoting our programs and receiving referrals, and then making sure that if we accept the students, we have the resources we need, although we're collecting the tuition, that we can take in those students, that our programs are in that capacity. So we're currently reviewing three referrals to our district this month, but this number reflects that students have aged out. I'm not counting in those referrals that we're reviewing, because I can't guarantee they'll come. Also, when we receive referrals from other districts, we're one of many places those families are visiting, so while we might accept them, the T, the other town and their district may choose a different place. So yes, I guess conservative, because I'm not putting in what we are projecting might be. Those are, those are more actual of what we have.
One other thing to just keep in the back of your mind, that number as well, so just like we just had a conversation about expanding our GEMS program to the middle school because our out-of-district cost are high, every district's doing the same thing, right? So every district wants to cut down the amount of out-of-district students they have, because it's good for kids and it's less expensive. And so in that number, in non-resident tuitions, we are out-of-district for someone, for some family, for some school, for some district, and they are motivated for all the same reasons that we are, to try to keep their students within their community. That ebbs and flows, right? So we've got some really great programs here that attract families, and when we have those programs, some of the questions that Diana's team gets is, how can we replicate that in our district? And we want to be supportive and collaborative, and we offer that resource, but then it means that potentially that district has now their version of a GEMS or an IXL or whatever.
Also, our costs are significantly less than a collaborative.
Our tuition.
Our tuitions for the outside people, for these specialized programs.
Diane, I know it's not the goal, but do you think that if this GEMS, if this GEMS position or teacher position or staff position is approved, is it your intent that it may attract some outside tuitions? Do you think it's realistic?
I think it's realistic, but not in its first year. We really try to give a program a first year with our own, and really make it an established program, because also when parents are coming to look at programs, they're asking, "How long has this been in place?" And if it's brand new, that they most likely won't choose us yet. Some will, because they see the value. So not in its first year, but any of our specialized programs, they go into our brochure, and they're always offered out.
The next major part is what's called beyond level services. So in the fall, we sit down and have conversations, leadership team, around what our additional priorities are, and I appreciate that over the past few months, if there were points where we were looking at a potential deficit for our budget, and I have questions like, why do we even bother having a conversation about priorities beyond just level services, just level funding? And the answer is because the climate, the resources at state and local level can always change, and in this case did. And so it's important to have had those conversations in the fall, so that when those resources change, you have an opportunity to revisit your priorities list. So what you see here for beyond level services is exactly that. It's the potential additions to our program, to our staffing, that we think would benefit all students, and would ultimately be a significant add to the educational program we have for kids. This particular year, you're seeing just 110,000 of recommended additions, that's that middle school program we've talked a lot about. But if you take a look at the appendix, you can see quite a long list, about 1.2 million dollars of a wide variety of recommendations that come from our leadership team. And again, just like we do with our budget, zero base, we start fresh each year and say, "What are those things that we definitely need for kids?" Those recommendations come through, they get vetted, and then ultimately we try to prioritize all of our needs for, for the district. We use a rubric as a group to identify not just the need, the impact individual building, but how that impact might be, might be realized across a school district. Does it address any safety needs? Is it a regulatory requirement? Try to take a look at each proposal for a number of different lenses, try to prioritize those that we still want to invest in this fiscal year. I guess the last one here we missed is, it's important, though, to take a look at the entire list, because while we don't at this moment have the resources to invest in all 1.2 million dollars in additional staffing and programs and equipment, materials, those sorts of things, we have to name them. Otherwise, we get lost in the shuffle in conversation around how we allocate costs for pens and pencils, and how we allocate costs for special education, all those other things that are also very important. So we bring them to attention because we think that they're important for our whole school district, and we're hopeful that while we may have to pay for them this year, that there's something that's on the radar continually going forward. So what you see in the next couple pages is just the explanation of what those are. I'm not going to go in from now, because I think Kathy did a great job of giving you an overview of the math materials under Priority 1, and Ms. Mullin gave you a great explanation of our Priority 2 recommendation. You see Priority 3, 4, and 5 there, those are budget neutral things, just to give you, again, some context for those priorities. There's no cost associated to some of the actions that we're taking there, but it helps give the community a sense of the kinds of things that we're investing in under some of the other priorities that don't have a dollar in it. Page 30 is probably the most important thing, now that you've understood the costs and you understand the revenues, what you see here is the snapshot of the overall budget. Again, go line by line for your personnel services, it's all in, all of the costs for every person who is employed in our school district, recommended beyond level services, it's just that special educator and specialized, paraprofessional for that middle school program, contractual services, all the services we pay for outside of our team, materials and supplies, it's just materials and supplies, and staff retirements, we talked about at the outset, all in, your costs for the school district are just shy of $44 million. For your resources, your local and state aid, as Mr. Gates alluded to, is reflected on that, under the financial forecast, just over $40 million. You see the bus leases going in and out, again, that's an above-the-line cost, comes in and out. State and federal grants, we walk through originally, Title 1, and MEKO, and the IDE grant, and those offsets, things like bus fees and athletics fees and so on. Total current resources is about $44 million in, and so you look at a difference of about $86,000. Now, it's important to note, typically, this time of year, our budget is around zero, right? A thousand dollars out of direction here, because we're a department of town, many dollars that aren't spent would get, I think it's absorbed back in the town as free cash. So it's incumbent on a department, the school department, to spend out, otherwise that resource is not used. That said, it has been, we've seen a lot of fluctuations in the financial climate and the financial landscape, both again, for our cost and at the state level. So we believe and we recommend that it would benefit, at least at this moment, in our budget process, to not allocate that resource there. I appreciate that would be one additional teacher, or paraprofessionals, or materials, equipment, and supplies, all of those could be really good things we could invest in. You've also seen that beyond level services list, there are some things that we could also get there. I would caution us from taking any action on that resource at all, and maybe later in our budget cycle, as we get closer to annual town meeting, we can certainly reconsider it, but I think given the amount of fluctuation we've had, it would beneficial to have a bit of a buffer for us. In addition, that's why we did include that 110,000 as recommended beyond level services, as just embedded in the Gates Middle School budget, wanted to call it out, because while it's entirely possible that that offset could result in a net positive for our budget, that is, that students who went to this program wouldn't go out of district, not a guarantee, right? It's entirely possible as well that maybe only one student is able to go, and is that the appropriate program? And then like, so those are question marks around that that we want to be transparent, honest about in the conversation, and we've had significant fluctuations in our budget overall. So that gives you the big picture of the school department's budget. Any questions? I can sort of go through some of the.
You just said that the 110 is part of the Gates budget?
It's not part of the Gates budget. So I purposely didn't embed it as part of your Gates budget, it's called out separately there, because we may or may not ultimately be able to go forward with that, or may well decide that that's the right thing to do to go forward with it, right? We want to, but it's called out separately for just that reason.
Not even if the Gates requested, it's completely separate.
In the page that says Gates, that 110 is not there at all, it's purposely accounted for only right there for you.
In the math program, that's 75,000 is spread throughout all four elementary schools?
It's actually not, it's spread out in the curriculum and PD at the district level. So anytime we do an adoption that's large scale, that's why I had Kathy talk to you about it at that moment, anytime we do an adoption that's large scale, we put it right here, this is the line that Jen and her office coordinate, so that goes there, so we keep track of it and make one purchase out for it, because the material's usually through one large purchase.
I think I've seen a lot of people that were very happy with the change in a week, that, you know, we were looking at a huge deficit, and now we have some money to work with. It's amazing.
And I want to underscore, it's not, it's not magical, right? The governor's budget came in significantly higher than anticipated, our growth numbers came in for the town higher than anticipated as well. We're still trying to be conservative there. I guess my, I want to impart on folks is that we, as a community, as a school department, have to look to a number of different places to get our revenues, and so when those revenues are in question, we like to hold off and say, "Let's get that right number." So that's why on the 27th, we held off on like looking through a budget, because we were about to get a new number coming in from the governor's office, coming in from the financial forecast. Once those numbers are in, that's what you have here in front of you.
Never expected that. Never.
No, and I think it's important to remember for everybody, you know, here and at home, that this is fluid and things change, and just, you may present something one night that's going to be completely different. Luckily, it's in our favor within a week.
I'm happy to see the surplus, there's a couple of questions on using that surplus. Let's say best-case scenario, we do have that to work with come next April, and let's say, let's say, for example, we don't use it, which would be a significant, if we don't use it, it goes back to the town in the form of free cash. Could that money essentially go into the stabilization fund, or is that not allowed to go that route?
So the short answer is yes and maybe, because if it went through town, it would go through free cash, free cash is a very likely place you'd set up stabilization. That said, we still have to negotiate and work out the mechanisms to fund stabilization, special education reserve, special education stabilization, and the regulations don't require certain process, which means every municipality and school department have to work that out individually. They do put some caveats to it, like you have to cabinet 2% of your net school spending, like there are some requirements that are statutory, but the actual funding mechanism is unique to local level. So the short answer is maybe, we'd have to work that out still. The other thing I want to underscore with you is because we've seen significant fluctuation in cost and revenue, it will be beneficial to keep this in up through till March at least, right, at least the next month or so, to ameliorate any other changes that may occur. Again, my hope is that they don't occur, we do our best to make sure we've got the most accurate numbers, both from our cost levels and from the state and local levels, but sometimes they do, and it's our job to be conservative with what, and how we allocate those resources to meet those needs. So short answer, sorry, is like, yes, we totally could, and I'm inclined to believe there, we could also see different changes from now until April that we want to allocate those resources to. The other thing I would share with you is that you may want to consider some of your other priorities as well. You see that priority list, it's substantial, and there's been some priorities in the list that have been on there year after year after year. You know, you're talking about like adjustment councils that we invested in last year, we've been looking to do those for a number of years, and so maybe there's some middle ground there as well, but in terms of the special education reserve, we still have to work out the funding mechanism that everybody agrees to.
I guess my question is, so we're going to, we collectively be working on this budget until we effectively vote on it prior to town meeting. So when we finally vote on this, do you anticipate that surplus will be effectively zero, or will we carry the surplus into the actual school year in the case of some unexpected expense?
The surplus would be zero, but if we found that there wasn't a place that we felt confident we could invest in and felt like the revenue would back it, what you'd do is you'd put it as a placeholder in addition to things that are fluctuating. So for example, you add that 85 to your out-of-district costs. You don't actually have 85 in additional out-of-district costs, but it would give you further buffer in out-of-district cost, it'd be even more conservative. And in the school year, if you didn't have that dollar amount in out-of-district cost, as an example, then you'd reappropriate, reallocate that money somewhere else. Could it be a special education reserve? It certainly could, but that'd be at the will of the, of the school today.
Okay, with that being said, I would just, it's in here somewhere, I would like to focus on potentially looking, I know it's been a hot topic or discussed, the increase in PTO are substitute teachers, I think that was an expected expense of like $40,000. As we talked about, it's not just about the pay, but it's about the kind of the dollar that we could have. that we could have if the substitute is not in the classroom, that potentially kids are missing their services. That's the way I'm looking at it, investing in those kids so that they don't miss their services for their I E P. I know there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes, but that seems like a reasonable pair that we could potentially look to throw in as we get closer to our actual budget goals.
So the next couple of months, what is the timeline for financial forecasts? Do you meet again? Is the potential this forty thousand ever could change? Or do we think this is the final number? It's going to depend on what the House and the Senate come back with when it comes to budget. Paul, you can certainly add more to this. So the, typically in the state of Massachusetts, Beacon Hill comes back with at least what the governor has projected, which is why that governor projection is so important to us, right? It usually serves as the floor. What's in play this year that's a little bit different is that they've added the SOA, that's due to opportunity act, which essentially reimagines the entire appropriation through Chapter Seventy. That throws the entire formula on its ear a little bit. And so we anticipate that the House and Senate will come back with at least the budget the governor has. If they don't, you bring the financial forecast back together, say, let's reanalyze what the new number is, and take a look at the impact of boarding rate. If it comes back the same as the governor's budget, there's no need to have financial forecast, that's your number.
Just a question. So our extended list of educational priorities that you had mentioned, some have been on there for a while. Is there, I feel like I've seen this in some documents, but is there a way to look at sort of which, what order, which ones have been on there longer, just to, I don't know, but just a stumbling to see, sort of, this one's been on here for three, four years? Like, should get to that sort of thing later, or?
So I would say we, we can give you that information, and we have to dig back through all the budgets. What we do, though, again, I just want to underscore, is we do zero-based budgeting. That is, each year, we re-ask the question, what is your top need? And so that changes each year, even if it's been on there for a while. In some cases, it may be something that we always kind of want, but something has risen to the, to the top need. And so what you see here highlighted in whatever grayish blue, those are the two top needs, even though, for example, this one here, Special Education Teacher Empower for this Extended Gems Program to the Gates, wasn't on there last year, but it is a top need. So we can dig through that data for you. I just want to be transparent in that that data doesn't necessarily drive the recommendation process.
I know this would necessarily come out of our budget, but do we have a number of items on the capital plan for this first town meeting?
We do, it's at the end of your, end of your package. So what I do is I just try to include all of the money, right? All things budget here in one shot for everybody. Again, the committee has already approved their recommendations for capital back in, I don't know, October, I believe. You're looking at about one point five million dollars in projected, proposed capital projects. For those who are really interested in all things capital, you've got a link right to the document as well. In that document, you can also drill down to every single individual project that is here and everything that we've done in the past couple of years and see, like, its status, its cost, a picture of the thing that was built, constructed, repaired, wherever it might be, all there for folks as well. So this will also be voted at annual town meeting, and it still goes through the process with capital planning exhibit, it's going to go through advisory as well. Do you have any questions? I know these guys have been incredibly patient, your department chairs and your principals have been patient for the past two hours, were clearly drawn on about all of this budget. Any questions for them about programs, buildings, you name it?
Well, I think the questions I get today are answered, and I know that if I have anything else, I can give you a further explanation. Anybody have any other questions?
Two quick ones, I think I asked this before. The one point five three, was that approved by capital so far?
No, all of it was recommended by capital. This is what's recommended by the school department.
All right. What was it recommended by the capital?
By capital or by the town, because those can be different sometimes.
Why don't you say, why don't you tell me the town?
Why do I get, I get both lists for you, if you'd like, and you can go through them?
I just got this this week.
Yeah.
I could, I plan on boarding.
Maybe we could do the report up at the next meeting or something, because they get sometimes different...
It's close to...
It's close to almost the entire amount.
Yeah.
And then, Paul, a question I've had a couple of times, which, again, is not a big number, but just want to discuss it, the idea of the partial reimbursement for transportation out of district. I know it's going to be phased in next year. It'll have minimal circuit breaker impact on us, but I just want to make sure I understand how that's calculated. And again, it just goes back to, and I know that it's kind of after the fact, but how the special education ban will impact potentially, will we get reimbursed for providing our own out-of-district transportation?
So recently, I attended the state regional meeting for special education, and this came up. I hope to learn more about it when I go to the circuit breaker training that's being made every year. So they are planning for this year to provide potentially twenty-five percent past a threshold to be named of what we have spent this school year on transportation for students out of district. Where it, where it gets a little funky is, for example, this doesn't apply to us, but it applies to another town that houses a collaborative program in their building. If they're transporting their own student to that program, that won't be reimbursable, even though it's an out-of-district program just housed in their building. But if they transport them to another location outside of their town, then it is reimbursable. We're going to be required to provide individual student invoices for that transportation cost, which is going to be a challenge to our transportation companies because they invoice us, let's say, four students on bus nine is this amount. Now they're going to have to break that down for students. The students that we transport from using our vans to, let's say, the collaborative, that will be reimbursable. Again, we're also going to have to show individual invoices. But there's more to come on this. That's the information that we've been provided so far. And they are looking to start this school year with twenty, at twenty-five percent.
No, I think, I think that's helpful. It's not a huge number for us, but it, but if they do phase it in over time to whatever it is, fifty or seventy-five percent, I think that it will. I just want to be sure that our, the town's investment in special advance would potentially not work against us in terms of providing our transportation, not being eligible for circuit breaker. That's why I'm a little bit nervous of that song.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So our special education vans that we use for our students that live in this town, that go to programs in this town, won't be reimbursable?
Correct.
Okay, just want to clarify.
I understand that. I know that part of our reason that we approved the special advance was to reduce our transportation costs.
Exactly.
But if we're not going to get reimbursed for them, then there's some sort of equilibrium where maybe we shouldn't invest in these. So I want to be sure that, as of now, I know it's changing, that those costs would be eligible for circuit breaker.
The question I think that we are waiting on, in bated breath, is what the threshold is going to be and what is going to be, what is going to be considered part of that threshold? So when you think about thresholds for circuit breaker, it's easy. It's a service. You're getting an invoice. Transportation's not that way. Some school districts like us have a capital investment in the actual vans themselves. Other districts have services that go out. We do capital for vans, but we have our own employees that actually drive vans. So there's two different buckets of money, one of which we have direct control over, one of which we typically don't. And when SOA was approved, everyone went, yep, good idea. But now on the actual minutia of developing a formula, Desi is wrestling with all of those questions that Ms. Mullin just alluded to. How do you break out the cost for a capital van? Have you, you know, realized that cost over the past seven years? What's the actual value of that? All of those questions now are being worked through, and I believe that, incredibly well faced, that's going to determine how they're set the threshold.
Okay. I just, I just, I guess really what I'm getting at is I want to make sure that the town's investment in special advance is not going to be negative to us in some way. I know that we don't really know that yet.
We don't.
But perhaps, perhaps we do know, I don't know what would happen if we do know after the town meeting, when they have, and the vans are approved, that it would negatively impact us when we did not just, when we just not purchased the buses? Like, is that what would happen?
It, like, it depends. Really, because Hingham, one of our partners around here, that we do some collaboration with, leased, we buy for vans. We lease our buses, they lease their buses. Hingham Cohasset, who we partner with also to do some special education, transportation with their own vans. We don't, we don't know how it's going to happen.
All right. And then lastly, and I'm sorry to belabor this, but in our budget, do we include the extra bus drivers that we'll need to run these buses in our twenty-one budget?
No.
Could we not include that?
We did not. We were, no, we did not.
I think we probably should. Otherwise, we don't even want to drive the buses, the vans.
The vans.
The vans, correct?
Right.
I'm not sure what that number is, but I think if we're going to get the buses, the vans, we're going to need someone to drive them.
Correct. But you've got to understand where I was looking at, at that point in time, in December, and this is, this was Tuesday night. And that's also one of the cautionary tales about that eighty thousand dollars, along with a lot of other things that are pulling on that eighty thousand dollars. There's a few things. Some of the retirements may not come to fruition, so the number for two forty-eight or whatever that may go down. You know, there's an awful lot of things that we need to work out between now and April thirteenth, with the special town meeting, I mean, the annual town meeting.
I think it's important to understand, and I'm learning this too, that we, we don't really have to have a firm, firm, firm budget till prior to that town meeting. So we have several weeks to continue to work on this budget, as I expect with the decision.
One of those capital. And, okay. It looks like just one item. High school, super high school, the line is very long. Right, the carpeting? Then I have on there. High school flooring. Two hundred and fifty thousand. But everything else is, so that would be carpeting, the high school locker and fitness room renovation, floor-to-door code, the special ed stands, the technology infrastructure, the wireless smoke detectors, and the cushion accessibility requests are all part of our capital group. And, boy. Except I do notice that we had requested fifty thousand, and our recommended amount is forty thousand for our smoke detectors. That mean we have to take up the ten thousand, different?
We don't recommend it, right? We just put an offer forward, we can't recommend it, it's something that goes, we can't recommend a total amount. We just sell what we feel will cost, and then capital planning, and the town decides this is what you would recommend.
Mr. Griffin has done.
Yes.
I guess I'll open it up to comments, statements, or questions. And I'd like to practice this by just saying that we are going to present the budget again in a future school committee meeting, where, so everybody will have time to digest what is presented, and there will be more questions at that time. And if you have a question, just please state your name and address for the matter. For, um, the... No takers?
Hi, I'm Nicole Gracia, S T E co-president. I'm just wondering, the document we've been going off of for weeks when we were trying to solve the issue was the document from January sixth. And when it says historical look at numbers, should those match the actuals when we're talking about out-of-district placements, because they're different?
Do you want to show them what you're looking at?
January sixth budget document had F Y eighteen and nineteen numbers are completely different from today's.
January's, don't I go with the target?
I assume those were actuals, because we're talking about...
So, as I stated, the budget included projected students that are up for discussion.
Well...
From eighteen nineteen?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's the eighteen nineteen numbers, which to me are done, accounted for, paid for, but they don't match today's eighteen nineteen numbers.
I will answer that question, and I will say this. We needed to get in front of the school committee on January sixth. Oh, sorry. We needed to get in front of the school committee with a preliminary number in looking at a lot of these things. And we, we were looking at this especially because this is where the opportunity that we needed to solve was spun. I was sick the last week of December into the beginning of the school week, and Diana was not here also. That was Monday. Ron did an awful lot of the work himself. Diana pulled a bunch of the information from fiscal year eighteen and fiscal year nineteen from her old spreadsheets that didn't have the end-of-the-year report actuals on it.
Because we have the spreadsheets and they don't match the spreadsheets either.
I answered the question, Nicole. As I'm, I'm telling you what happened, we have perfected that since then. These are the numbers from fiscal year eighteen and fiscal year nineteen that Diana and I went over last week to make sure that they're correct.
So the spreadsheets should match today's numbers, because I was counting this morning, they don't seem to.
I think what Paul was saying was that at the time that the numbers were put together for the January sixth meeting, he was out, Diana was out, and then the numbers that were presented weren't accurate.
We needed a change.
Right. I just, I don't know if they, spreadsheet information seems different, even than the numbers today, the, the actuals today.
The spreadsheet from January sixth?
A spreadsheet we requested from F Y eighteen and nineteen.
Sounds like something, it's funny hearing Paul here, there's an error, right? So it sounds like if you've got a question about it, maybe they can take a look at it with you and they can reconcile those numbers for you. That's a reasonable resolution to it.
Yes, that sounds, you can talk to Paul now.
And, well, Diane's...
Can we see that in the tent if you're, you're going to...
Sure. We'll make sure it reflects that.
Please, so long as they can.
Great.
Any other comments or questions?
Hi, Emily Matthews. My first question is, is Hattaway going to have three second grade teachers next year? I got a little confused.
No.
Even with twenty-three and twenty-four students in each...
That's correct.
But there's a budget, so the fourth grade currently has three fourth grade teachers. Why can't one of those F T E teachers move to sect two the upcoming second grade year?
One could, but when we allocate all of our staff and want to make sure there's no reductions in force, one of those F T Es would account for retirement somewhere else. So it's not just within Hattaway, right? We don't just staff Hattaway, we staff the entire elementary program? So that's, that's your short answer, is that, yes, you certainly could, you could do a easy reassignment there, but it means that your short staff number's somewhere else.
But twenty-three and twenty-four for a second grade, those are very large classes. I don't know exactly what all the numbers are off the top of my head for other second grades across the district, but that is significantly larger than a lot of the other second grades. It just doesn't seem equitable.
I think what Mr. Griffin is saying, that with the, if there's a retirement in another elementary school?
Yeah, I understand how that works. I'm just suggesting that it just doesn't feel equitable. I mean, they've already received a para in the first grade to support that, but those size, class sizes aren't going down as we move into second grade.
No, I think we hear what you're saying. I mean, if, if any, something happens to change between now and when the final budget and schedule and future positions are finalized, and we're able to alleviate that problem, we can do that.
we can do that, but as of today, if that's, it's going to stay as it is.
Can I, can I ask a different question along the same lines, just for my personal understanding, maybe it might benefit someone else? Every, everything on proposal pages 36 and 37, is any of that going through? Because, for example, elementary teacher assigned to Hatherley is grade two, you're telling me it's not happening right now?
Just the two items at the top?
So just the two shaded items?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Something too, if you look at page seven, that's where you have to do, it's having that, but it tells you sort of that the deficit is, so there are, I totally get the equity piece, like, it's majorly important. We're looking, you know, just take Wamptuck grade one, that's going to be, if it's three sections, you've got like 21, 22 there, cushioning, same, you know, look at Wamptuck, grade two, same thing, 21 in each section. I mean, there's definitely some dips. You know, like, one of my son's classes had a, they just had a super tiny year, he's going to be, well, he'll be gate next year, so if he's not on this, well, yeah, but he's in a different section, but there, I mean, he had a year that was like 15, 16, which I actually touch low, but there's nothing you can do about it, but he may have three sections of 15, 16, but, and yeah, it's like another one of those areas that I can definitely appreciate is hard for the team to kind of predict who moves in, who moves out. But it's definitely on our radar, like, top priority for everybody in the room, that we all agree that we want class sizes to be small and equitable.
Well, I'd also like to point out, it, it, the inequity not only is across that particular grade level, but, for example, my son is in fourth grade at Hatherley, and he has three teachers, and the class size is 16 each. So what kind of message are we sending to the first grade parents that we believe that the fourth grade should have three teachers when they were in, when they moved into second grade, but your class shouldn't? Or, or doesn't?
I think one of the issues with that particular grade was that there were a lot of move-ins that were unexpected.
No.
They were not all, all of the kids, you know, but, um, but that was one issue.
The current second grade has had a bunch of move-ins, but not the current first grade.
I mean, that's something we can predict, and unfortunately, that move-ins in August, that affects the class size.
Right, so you're working out. I have, I have another question, just about, um, in past years, and I'm hoping that my answer is the link on the bottom of 39, that I actually didn't click on, um, so I'll, I'll definitely look at it, but in past years, um, we discussed creating a rainy day fund for maintenance for the, for the facilities, um, and it dawned on me when you were talking about the Spen stabilization fund. I'm just wondering if that maintenance fund was ever put into place? Is that what the multi-year facilities and capital plan, if I click on that, will I find that fund? How it's been, how, what's happened with that?
The proposal was $100,000 added to the operating budget for all sorts of maintenance projects.
Yeah.
That ultimately was not funded, so it's not part of your operating budget in any way. You do see some of the small projects that we do, we do in, in custodial budgets that, that the operations team has, but our goal was to add additional $100,000 to our operating costs, and those were not...
And that wasn't able to happen? And, so is that, your, the Spen stabilization fund you're saying would happen hand-to-hand with the town?
Yes.
Can our maintenance budget also be supported by the town, or is that, is that solely on the job of the district?
The short answer is, the way you just described it, the way we described it, would be totally on the district, the operating funds. And just like you saw that list of priorities, including that additional teacher for the Hatherley, that $100,000 didn't make it to the top of that list, to be added to the operational fund, along with the other $1.1 million of really good things for our schools, really good things for our kids, that we ultimately can't afford all at once. Stabilization for capital does exist, but that's through your town, not through the school department. So, God forbid, like, a roof collapses or something, well, then, that's capital stabilization. It's not within your school department's locus of control, but is a building of your 60-town buildings that requires a massive capital immediate, you know, issue, you could potentially request to lean on capital stabilization for something like that.
So, right now, the Spen stabilization fund is just a recommendation? Is that correct?
That's correct. It's, we're having conversations now with our colleagues in the town, because as I mentioned earlier, it requires negotiation at a, at a local level about how you fund it, right? The funding mechanism is not statutory, so you have to work out an MOU that articulates the way in which it's, can be funded.
Okay.
That said, you can have that on your annual town meeting article to establish.
Are we talking with the town currently?
Say that again?
Are we talking with the, I'm sorry, struggling.
Yes, we're talking with the town currently.
Yes, yeah, is it on the warrant?
Already on the warrant.
So, at annual town meeting, when they vote articles, one of them will be to create the stabilization.
Fantastic.
It will not be funded, to be fair.
Right, it won't be funded, it'll be there, and then funding will come after.
And then conversations on funding will come later.
Yes, yes.
I think this was clarified by you, Ron, actually a little bit later on, but since I'm already standing, um, have we determined, I, by the way, I, I think that the GEMS program, I, I remember originally when it was created, and I loved that it was supposed to start at K to five, and then expand into the middle school, and eventually the high school, and I think that's, that's wonderful. Um, is there potential to bring any, are there any out-of-district placement students that might benefit from the GEMS program, and then would, and therefore would return for next school year, reducing our out-of-district budget?
Maybe, yeah.
Okay.
There's team decisions, uh, team discussions, and certainly, um, we always have that discussion of placement at every team meeting, um, and talk about if the student is ready to return, and what do we have here to support them.
Great, I just wanted to clarify, because it's not just for current fifth graders who might be moving into the middle school, there's potential to support students that are currently middle schoolers, that are out of district?
There's potential, yeah.
Great. All right, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, Josephine Hanley. So, we talked a little bit about how it would be helpful to have the detail behind the budget, I think it would help with a lot of the questions you guys had, certainly, and we have some of the reconciliation issues that we have. What is the plan, and when would we have a more detailed budget?
What specifically would you mean, looking at, like, a line item?
Yes. Yeah, so this is obviously built up from more detail, so we would like to see what each of those current summary line items is made up of. Because that's how you get insight, and I know you guys had questions too, that would be addressed by that, and I know the answer in a lot of cases was, we'll get back to you with the detail on that. I think we need transparency for everybody on those issues, I think it would be just really helpful, and I, you know, I think there's no value in not having that.
Well, any of the questions that we have and are requesting follow-up, you know, usually it's presented at the next meeting, you know, any of the follow-up questions, February 10th, we'll, we'll hear from them. As for the line item, um, that's available if you want to request it.
So, I think my question is probably to the, the budget preparer, and maybe to Ron, is there a plan to make more detail available?
The model that we have here, you know, to Miss Brandon Lee's question about breaking out your specialized programs, we can do that in our next iteration for everyone, you can take a look at, you know, how much does the GEMS program cost you, and so on and so forth. We don't plan to give 600 lines of detail for this budget, but in future budgets, if that's something you feel strongly about, you can certainly charge your team with doing exactly that. We're halfway through the budget process, it's not our intention to throw this one out and start from scratch, but it does, it's something you'll certainly do in the future.
So, I think professionally, I would like to request that it's kind of a more detailed level, and also, we don't need 600 lines, we'd be happy to take whatever the granular level is that you currently have.
That's the, that's, that's it.
The line item, why do you need 600 lines?
There's two levels, there's the granular level of 600 lines, which you can certainly do in the future, and there's a level that's consolidated, that gives you, this is how much the personnel costs, or this is how much the materials and supplies cost.
Yeah, and to be clear, what I meant was, you said we could do that in the future, we couldn't do it now, because we don't have it now. I'm sure you have a level below this, I'm just saying we'd be happy to take that. Yeah, or 600. Do you, do you have the 600 lines for the current budget?
This budget is built the way it's built. Again, I would say that you can certainly rebuild something in the future that you'd like to in a completely different way.
This is what's presented, this is historically, this, for, I don't know how many years, this is how the budget has been presented. Years ago, it was presented line item, in every, at town meeting, every line item was voted on, that was changed by the voters to present it this way.
You can certainly change it back in the future, but you can't do it in the street.
Do you want to sit here and go over every single line item?
So, I'm sorry, I just, I want to be clear, we need to be able to raise questions, parents need to be able to raise questions, and not have it treated as if they're sort of an inconvenience. I'm not asking that we go through them line by line in the meeting, we need visibility, we need transparency. We might not talk about any of them, we might not talk, we might only talk about line 400. But there's nothing unreasonable, I think, about parents wanting to see it, and I think, I'm not the only parent that feels that way, certainly not any parent feels that way. So, we're not looking to make this a three-day meeting, but I see no reason why we couldn't have information and bring informed questions to this meeting about particular matters.
And, again, the, I know you said this on Monday, but if anyone who, anyone in the town can request a copy of the budget, line item, by line item, that's available.
Would you have to ask by line item?
No. Um, you could ask Paul for a copy of the budget, by line item.
Could we get that?
Run, run the budget.
I was told it.
So, again, if you want to make a request for it, you certainly can. The budget that we're developing and presenting isn't structured that it is here, we're not going to present 600 lines. That doesn't mean you can't present in the future, though, you certainly can reorganize your entire budget, that's fully within the scope of the district, but we're halfway through our budget cycle, so this is the structure that we have, we're going to modify as per requested, but the model and the page that you see here aren't going to, you know, add those, whatever it is, 30 pages of every single line item. You can in the future, certainly, but that's not the model that we have here right now.
No, they're not saying that we change the model, I'm just saying that anybody can go into, um, into the office and say, I would like a copy of the line item budget. That's what I'm saying. That you're, that you can do that. I'm sorry?
It doesn't seem efficient that parents would individually go into the office, but, and just for the record, I want to be clear, Ron, at no point did I say we should present the 600 lines, so I just want that to be clear. And I do have another question. Nicole, on the, um, the smoke detectors, what is the process that, that goes to get from the $50,000 request to the $40,000 recommendation? Who's involved in that discussion?
Well, um, it's, pretty much at the capital planning committee is when the team came and presented sort of all those capital items to go ahead, forward, and, um, I'm actually not sure where the $10,000 fell off on that particular item, um, so, because capital planning kind of just makes the recommendation forward, um, and we just got this week that full approval list of what's going to go to town meeting, so, um, I'm not sure why there's a $10,000 discrepancy, so I'm going to find out, but...
Yeah, because I just, again, for the record, it's, it's taken us, you know, a year to, to get to the discussion about its own protection in these two schools, and I believe that the $50,000 came from the fire department, that estimate, and I know that, you know, everybody has made it very clear that nobody here is an expert on, on fire protection, and we have to rely on the experts, so I'm curious how capital committee would have been able to lock $10,000.
We'll, we'll find out where the $10,000 fell off, but, to me, we're going to talk about the budget, so...
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a question. Anne Marie Galvin, first person. Where do school counselors fall in staffing line items? Are they part of the teacher specialist hiring?
They are for every building, so if you have a counselor in the middle school, their salary would be represented in, um, building. One of the reasons, sorry, one of the reasons that we typically don't do line by line, in some cases, there's only one person who's at a building as a counselor, so for example, we have an adjustment counselor at Hatherley, one person, and therefore the counselor's line for that one building is that person's salary. Is it public information? Yes. Can you request it? Absolutely. The reason that we don't give that level of detail in the district of our size, because it calls out some of those individual folks.
Is it the same in high school? I see that high school has its own line item that's called athletic staff student life advisors, counseling students life advisors, or not?
It's typically, it's typically not, those are our, um, so, for the high school, as part of our contract with the teachers' union, we've got a list of both sports stipends and clubs activities stipends. That's where those resources are.
Awesome, that's helpful, thank you. And then I just, I take a question, they have, and salaries, tell them.
And then, one other, more of a comment, and certainly I'll be more involved in this new and improved process going forward, it's been really enlightening, but in the hot topic item, special ed, forecasting special ed class, I'd like to make sure that we are aware of a resource to our high school students, who aren't at year, as happens every unit, for the, through the North River Collaborative, but situat is part of a catchment area for students with substance use disorders, a copy of the Hennes Academy, and we should either call that out as, as a line item, or make sure that we include and project to send our students there. There's a ID, and I expect, knowing what we know about increasing top lists, but we are one of these, our high school students, we should be planning to send students there. And it's an inexpensive out-of-district cost, it's roughly $14,000 a year. Unfortunately, the way the state member goes to them, they have to handle lusing, we don't reimburse the blessing, so that's a challenge for them, but we can expect tuition going away, I hope. It's a wonderful place, and the advisors who are there, I mean, happy to bring in one for visits, very, very special. Often, students don't go for their whole school experience, they'll go temporarily to be supportive of community peers, with lots of the special education supports there, so it's a deal, it's a deal really, and it's a very special place. Many of the students come back to their home district to graduate or participate in sports, there's lots of flexibility, and many of our, us, other communities are sending students there, so I hope to promote that resource to the school committee and to the community, and to make sure that we plan for it, because of course, I can go and get them.
Anne Marie, I just also want to say, and thank you for sharing that. It's not a special education placement, per se, but I have looked at the regulations that have been placed on that, because we were looking at that for some of our students. It's, it would only fall within my department if that student also has an IEP service.
Yes.
So it's for students with and without IEP services, I just want to make that clear, that it's not just a special educa, it's not actually a special education service.
Right, so would then, should we create a line item, um, somewhere in the general budget? Like, where would that fall in context? It's, it's a specialized education.
I'm not sure, I, I, that, so for me, if there's a case, an IEP would come into my out-of-district, obviously, but otherwise, I'm, I'm, that wouldn't be fallen, so I don't know, but...
So it's known, so I guess that's not...
I don't know how the high school does that, and, you know, I know we've had students attend and whatnot, so, I just want to speak to my part.
I know, that's very Marshfield, they're all using it, so I'll find out how they account for it.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
If there are any other questions, I would just have a motion to adjourn. All looking data?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming on.